Good evening. The September 8th, 2022 final budget hearing and board meeting is now in order. I'm happy to welcome my fellow board members and the public. I would like to take this opportunity to remind the public that the appropriate place for public participation in the meeting is during your individual public comment opportunity as identified in the agenda. Outside of your individual public comment opportunity, your role in the meeting is as an observer this evening. Mr. Gibbs, roll call please.
Ms. Belfer.
Present.
Ms. McDougal.
Present.
Ms. Campbell.
Present.
Ms. Jenkins.
Present.
Mr. Susan.
Present.
Please stand for the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the tribe of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with a routine justice for all.
The board will now hold a moment of silent reflection and invite the audience to join. Ms. Campbell, did you want a request on our focus for silent reflection this evening?
As the world is mourning the death of Queen Elizabeth, but we just might have that in our hearts as well.
Thank you. At this time, I would like to offer my fellow board members and Dr. Mullins an opportunity to recognize students, staff, or members of our community. Ms. Jenkins actually has a special recognition this evening, so I'm gonna provide her the opportunity to go first.
Yeah, I'm gonna go down as a podium real quick. All right. So I am super excited to address this in front of everybody. We've kind of talked about this a couple of times. I had received a phone call on Martin Luther King Day, so it's been a really, really long time from City Councilman Alex Goines in Cocoa. And we had started this journey together to figure out a way to rejuvenate the weight room in Cocoa High School. And I don't want to spend too much time on how that happened again because I already told this story, but it's done, it's over, and I'm really excited to celebrate it. I want everyone to be aware of it. I want everyone to be aware of all the people it took to come and put this together. So this is a weight room that not only serves the football team that was highlighted during this project, it serves all of the students at Cocoa High School that are in any athletics program as well as their weight training class. So I want to say a special shout out to Cocoa City Councilman Alex Goines. Thank you for making that phone call in the first place to me. This would have never happened without you. The next person who is one of the major key players is an actual Satellite High School graduate. His name is Patrick Abrahams. He is a college game day producer for ESPN. He is an Emmy award-winning producer. I know we had another student in BPS that we acknowledged recently that is a college game day Emmy award-winning student as well. So let's give a shout out to our amazing students. Ms. Stewart, the principal of Cocoa High School, thank you for all that you've done. Mr. Wilson, before you became our COO, you were in the game with me on this as well. We've got athletic director, Mr. Mark Carstens, all of the custodians at Cocoa High School. The amount of boxes that we had to unbox was insane. Thank you for being a part of that and taking care of that for us. Thank you to the parents and the community members who stepped up and showed up to build the actual equipment with us, to paint that room with us, to put that room together. And to tomorrow's team, a nonprofit organization out in Orlando who came and sent some volunteers to help support us as well as building that equipment. Special shout out to our facilities department, Ms. Sue Han, Sean Hines, Ed Breznea, I'm sorry if I'm saying your name wrong, John Rittenhouse, and Trey Rose. Thank you to every single person who participated in this. It was a four-day event. It had to happen quickly. On a Sunday, we got together, we banged it out, we built everything, we unpackaged everything. The next day, we had the pleasure of Marty Smith, an ESPN commentator, a NASCAR coverage commentator, working for Academy Sports and a program on YouTube called Traditions. He came out, surprised the school, surprised all of the coaches and all of the students, and did some interviews with everybody. It was a really incredible experience on Monday. Had some tear-jerker moments. They had an opportunity to interview three of our athletes. Two have already accepted college applications and offers to go play there. And one of them is actually the valedictorian of the school this year, which is pretty impressive, and he's working towards a perfect SAT score. Really incredible students, really incredible stories. Got to hear words from the coaches, why they do what they do, why they love these students, and what makes Cocoa High School so unique and so important to them. And that was really important to me. So thank you again to Academy Sports and Outdoors, to CAD Athletics. And they gave us $75,000 worth of equipment. Seventy-five thousand! Awesome. So some of the pictures that you're gonna see here are the finished weight room. However, the floors aren't done yet. Those are coming. We couldn't procure those fast enough, but they are coming. They're gonna get a fresh new floor. Okay, so, special recognition. There is an incredible human being here today that I asked to come here today. And he is one of the assistant coaches for the football program. And I met him early on in this journey because of Mr. Goines. I would have never known who this man was if I'd never received that phone call. And man, I am so grateful to have met this man. Mr. James Folsen. You can sit up, come. Mr. Folsen, I might get this wrong, and I'm gonna be aging you at the exact same time. I apologize in advance. Cocoa Class of '89? Yes, okay. This incredible man went to Cocoa High School himself. He went off to college, I believe you got scholarships for that as well. Went off to play for the Los Angeles Raiders, the Arizona Cardinals. And when he retired from the NFL, unlike many of his colleagues, like he said in the interview I had the pleasure of watching, he decided to come back to his community, come back to Cocoa, raise his own children, send them to the school that he went to. He loved and he respected. Mr. Folsen has donated over 15,000 volunteer hours to Cocoa High School. He does not receive $1 as a assistant coach for the school. He refuses to take a penny. He gives his own financial contributions. When we had talked about doing this room and we said we wanted some murals to inspire some community and pride for Cocoa High School, Mr. Folsen took it on his own. Right away, within 24 hours, he got the Viera High School graduate Jesse Travis to come in and agree to do it for us. And he also encouraged another Cocoa High School graduate, who is now the assistant coach of the Chicago Bears, Mr. James Rowe, to fund the mural for us. So thank you for that. And I'm just gonna share a little tidbit of something that I... There was so much from your interview that I loved, but I'm not gonna share it all because I want you all to watch it when it finally airs. But Mr. Folsen had explained to Marty that they refer to it as the jungle, the weight room and their training program. And he said their motto is "We do more with less", which is great, which is wonderful. And it's wonderful that the students never complained about it. But I had the pleasure of speaking to those students and telling them, "I'm so proud of you that you're able to do more with less, but you shouldn't have to. You're worthy, just like everyone else in this school district, and I'm so proud that you have the opportunity to now have this new weight room to continue to blossom and grow." And my favorite part of the interview was when Marty said, "Well, what are you gonna do if we get you a new weight room? What's that gonna mean to you?" And his response was, "We're gonna need a new motto." So, Mr. Folsen, I asked you to come here today because I know you are respected, you are admired, you are loved by your students, your staff, and even your community because I'm pretty sure there's a Mr. James Folsen Day in the city of Cocoa. But I felt like it was absolutely necessary for us as a district to just acknowledge you and to thank you for all that you do, that you continue to do, and to inspire others to come back to their community and give back like you do every single day. And I don't want to be the last one to say positive things about you. I did ask Ms. Stewart just to share a little bit more about the amazing things that you do. So thank you.
This is truly an honor to be able to express my gratitude, not just personally, but on behalf of the school and Cocoa community. One of the things that I love most about being principal of Cocoa High is the amount of pride that our community, our students, our staff, and most importantly, our volunteers like you. Of course, you are above, heads and shoulders above when it comes to volunteer hours, asking nothing in return. Nothing. This is not something that I know that you would want or ask for, and I'm sure that you are standing there like, "Please, just finish this up." But you need to take your moment in the sun because you have given so much to the students of Cocoa High, to the community of Cocoa High. Coach Carstens said today, "You are the epitome of selflessness." And I don't know that I can say that better, so I'm gonna leave it there. From the bottom of my heart, sir, thank you so much for everything you do for the school and the community of Cocoa.
Man, it's an honor to be standing here in front of you guys. Grew up in Virginia Park. I tell this to the kids and everywhere I speak all the time. Sometimes we gotta know what's our why. My why was, I grew up in Virginia Park. Grew up in a two-bedroom house, shared one bedroom with four brothers. All five of us in one bedroom. No central air and heat. Box fan in the window. Bunk beds in the room. I chose to sleep on the floor. To some, sleeping on the floor is a hardship. For me, it was a luxury. Because I had the opportunity to sleep on the floor in front of a box fan that was also on the floor. And so, I mean, you know, growing up with all the resources that we have now, I didn't have this. Nobody in my neighborhood had that. So to have an opportunity to come back and give back, I mean, and I can say this right now, in those locker rooms I had, had a lot of veteran leadership with the Raiders and Arizona Cardinals. And quite a few of those guys always talking about going back and give back. And some of their paths were slightly different than mine. But we all, I mean, still had the same common goal. We all had war stories. With that being said, most of them moved to bigger cities to give back. I mean, a lot of them moved to small towns, Cocoa or whatever it may be. A lot of guys were from South Florida. I mean, it's easy to go back to South Florida and give back. But to come back to Cocoa, demographic location, I mean, household median's what? Right at 30, 35 to 37,000. And so I felt like if I can come back and show these guys the why and let them know what pitfalls to avoid, if I can reach one, that means I've done what I was supposed to do when I came back. My ultimate goal was to come back for 10 years and ride off into the sunset. I've been here now for what, 15 years? So appreciate this opportunity to stay in front of you guys. Appreciate you guys for acknowledging me, man. I mean, hey, we move forward, we move forward, we got more to do. And the ultimate goal is hopefully 10 to 15 years down the road, some of the kids that had opportunity to instill livelihood in, hopefully they come back to give back the same way that we're doing. Thanks for having me.
Ms. Jenkins, I just want to take a quick moment, and I hope I'm not stepping on your toes, but I just want to recognize Councilman Alex Goines who came in after you started. So he wasn't here for the recognition, but we appreciate you, Alex.
Thank you, thank you, I appreciate that. I kept scanning the room, I'm really sorry, Alex. I said your name like 100 times, though.
Yeah, I think he was walking in, as you were saying, at once, but I just wanted to make sure he knew that he was in fact recognized and that you knew that he made it. Okay, that's a tough act to follow, but I will now offer my fellow board members an opportunity for their recognitions.
I'll talk fast. I just wanted to recognize a couple of things. We had Lockmar Elementary in Palm Bay had National Hero Day Parade, and they organized just about the whole entire school in the car loop. And the Palm Bay Police Department were such great sports. They came to the loop, waved at the kids, the sirens were going off, the SWAT truck was there. They had donuts for the officers at the end. It was fantastic and such a great way for our students to get to recognize our local heroes. And so kudos to Lockmar and to the Palm Bay Police Department for being a part of that day. You know, we have workforce shortage, that includes our substitutes. Just wanted to give a shout out to the Human Resources Department. I know Dr. Thetty and all her staff have been working really hard on that. We have a new app called Red Rover, and I'm trying to challenge the board a month ago, "Hey, y'all jump in when you can and sub." I've already gotten my first three-sub jobs behind me. And the app is actually pretty easy to use, and I think we're having better fill rates than we've ever had before. So kudos to her team for walking the new substitutes and the old substitutes through this new process, and her staff are taking advantage of it. So, and they have actually been doing these little sub socials at our schools that are harder to fill, so our subs get to know those schools and realize, "Hey, this is a great place for you to come, meet the principal, walk with the school." And so hopefully we'll see a better fill rates at those schools where we're having a hard time getting subs. So, and just one other shout out. I noticed that at Bayside High School on the first day of school, but I know some of our other schools are doing it as well, they're really integrating some technology now that the buses have the passes with the kids' IDs. Some of the schools like Bayside are integrating their ID cards on their lanyards with focus, with the bus passes, with everything all together. So while Dr. Mullins and I were there, we had a kid walk up, "I don't know where I'm supposed to go," and the administrator came and scanned the kid's ID on the back, and they could tell him what class they were supposed to go to, like a freshman who didn't know where he was supposed to go, or what bus they were supposed to be on. So it was a great integration of technology. They're using it for their passes in and out of the bathroom. So just proud of our schools who are all doing something a little differently sometimes, but they're integrating that technology to try to streamline the process that makes it easier for our students, for our staff, and for the admin. So good job. See, I'll talk fast.
Thank you, Ms. Campbell. Mr. Susan?
Well, it's funny that you talk about that technology because we have our transportation director and his staff here tonight, which everybody here who understands the war that we've been doing to try to get the kids to school with, to say as an understatement, less than the individuals needed to do so, and trying to mismatch at the last minute, many times in the beginning of the morning, the staff that's there takes calls that these three bus drivers weren't able to make it, and they're trying to coordinate just off the top of what they can try to do to make it happen. So those individuals that are sitting right there, Mike, you raise your hands, everybody, I'm gonna embarrass you. That team right there is responsible for your Central, North, and South area transportation. And you guys just made us look real good by implementing those new cards for everybody because now Joey gets on the wrong bus, we know about it, and we know where he's at. You know what I mean? So, and then there's one other individual that I wanted to thank that's in part of this team. She was Ms. Emmer. She, when I was a teacher at Space Coast, noticed that he's here today. I was, a bus didn't show up for my wrestling team. And you stopped and said, "I will take the team," and you coordinated other buses to go and drove those kids to Satellite, and we won that tournament. And those kids will always be in remembrance. We won that by the largest margin Space Coast ever had in wrestling, and it was all because of you. So thank you so much for that, and I appreciate it, and I appreciate everything you guys do. Thank you very much. The other thing I wanted to do is, we got a couple of really cool things that are on the agenda tonight. We're not really gonna talk about them, but the Viera High Classroom Edition, just so everybody knows, there's a CTE program going in there. It's gonna be a construction and framing program. The kids are actually gonna be working straight right there and then go to work into Viera Builders because, like a lot of Palm Bay, Viera and Titusville, I was up there the other day, it is insane. They need direct workforce, and that is gonna fill that. So this Classroom Edition that we approved tonight is gonna have that inside of it, and it's absolutely amazing. Also, Marine O'Gally High School, the only marine lab that we have inside the entire county, and one of the very few inside the entire state, is getting an overhaul, and it's much needed. But that is the most amazing thing because not many people know that we are one or two largest manufacturers of boats in the United States. Not many people know that we have all of their headquarters here. And so that program feeds a lot of those kids that are out there. And those kids that actually go through the certifications, they go on, and they end up winning awards and taking those down all over the place in the United States for like Evanrude and some of those other outboard motors. So it's a phenomenal program, I was really excited about. And then we have the FASSA liftoff. I don't know if you guys know about it, but many of our students do not fill out for... They don't fill out information for college. And when I was a coach at Space Coast, not to keep talking about it, and at O'Gally, and at Viera, at the end of the year, what would end up happening is, is we would work with those kids to try to fill out FASSA because their families wouldn't fill it out, and this is an opportunity for our kids to receive money. And that was one of the only ways these kids could actually get to school. So our school district is taking an initiative to make sure that we do that at a better rate. So thank you, Dr. Mullins, for all of that. I do want to throw out, you guys are all invited, the Central Florida Manufacturers Association is hosting a "Made in Central Florida." They're trying to initiate a very large initiative to bring manufacturing back past what it is now. So many of you know that right now, a lot of the manufacturers that are coming into the Space Coast are actually denying it right now. We're seeing denials, and the reason is, there's not enough actual housing. Like, they say that they'll come here for their headquarters, but then there's not even enough housing here for them to move here. So what's happening is, the Central Florida region is working together to create a, like, a plan across the board, and I'll get you guys that information, but I sat down with him, and he's gonna reach out to each one of you guys to talk about what that means. And then Andrew Ramjet, I, Giles Malone, and a host of other athletic groups are gonna form the Brevard Athletics Association officially. We've got almost $100,000 donated, and that's for three different things to assist with athletics. Many of the situations, and I want to say thank you to Ms. Jenkins for doing the work over there inside the weight room, and that is throughout the entire county as far as other things that we can help out with, vertically integrate recreational programs with the high school program so that the coaches that are down in rec leagues will be able to learn exactly what the high school coaches are doing. And it's vertical integration. We need to start having combines for each one of the sports and run that so that we can actually get our kids to end college scholarships and get promoted. So I just wanted to say thank you to everybody, and I was quick, I just talked a lot. So, thank you, everybody.
How surprising. Thank you, Mr. Susan. Ms. McDougal?
I just have a couple. And first, I want to give another shout out to our facilities department. Our facilities department, where's Sue? Is she out in the hallway? Ms. Han and her department, it was like, if one thing can happen, then the next thing will happen. We had air conditioners and chillers go down one after another, and schools had no fans and moving people. And they worked overtime, round the clock, to make sure that our schools were cool and able to accommodate our students. So shout out to our facilities department. So thank you very much for that. And I know that Ms. Jenkins has been thanking everyone, but Ms. Jenkins, I really want to thank... but Ms. Jenkins, I really want to thank you for taking the time and being connected and going forward with Cocoa High School. That when you looked at that weight room, it was really dangerous and atrocious, and now it's fantastic. So thank you very much for putting that all together. I appreciate it.
Dr. Mullins?
Thank you, Ms. Belford. I do want to make a couple of recognitions. I'm gonna ask Mr. Susan to help me out here. Will you just hold that up? That's a little heavy. Oh, wait. Don't, don't break it. You have to hold it up and not let it down. I've got a long, got a long speech.
I'm trying not to get in the picture. Here we go. Is this good? Are we good here? All right, go ahead.
Very excited to share that for the 10th year in a row, the Government Finance Officers Association has awarded the Certificate of Achievement for Excellence in Financial Reporting to Brevard Public Schools for its annual comprehensive financial report for fiscal year ending June 30, 2021. It's a year lag, so we know we're just closing twenty-two, but ten years running, there you go. The report was judged by an impartial panel to meet the high standards of the program, which includes demonstrating a constructive spirit of full disclosure to clearly communicate its financial story and motivate potential users and user groups to read the report. The Certificate of Achievement is the highest form of recognition in the area of governmental accounting and financial reporting, and its attainment represents a significant accomplishment by a government and its management. Would you please join me? I know we have some of our accounting services team here in the room. So can I ask all of our accounting services folks? I see you back there. Come on, stand up. Come on. Congratulations. And we know that that is no small accomplishment. Ten years in a row takes consistent dedication, commitment, and attention to detail to ensure that we can tout this award and assure our community that we are committed to not only full disclosure, but using every dollar we are entrusted from our taxpayers to the benefit of our students and for return on investment for our community. So thank you for our amazing accounting team. Appreciate you. And I just want to know, whose wall does this hang on? Because it requires like a 200-pound. Mr. Susan's had to lean on the counter to, to hold it up. Congratulations, accounting. Thank you, Mr. Susan.
Anytime you need me to hold up the award.
And then I also want to take a moment and just share, this is an amazing story of recognition of one of, of our students. The type of young men and women that we have the privilege of helping raise up. So if you'll indulge me for just a couple of minutes. A BPS student was recently honored by the Brevard County Fire Rescue and the Sheriff's Office for using CPR to save the life of a girl struck by lightning. You can see her photo, pictures should be on the, on the screen. Two girls, two young ladies, Lori, age 14, and Mackenzie, age 12, were struck by lightning in June. Lori was in cardiac arrest and was given CPR by Ava, age 14, who was a Merritt Island High School student. You see her in the middle depicted with Mr. Reamer, the principal. Ava was on the phone with a 911 dispatcher giving CPR directions to Ava. The brave actions taken by Ava helped keep Lori alive until deputies and paramedics arrived. Thanks to everyone working together, Lori's life was saved. Mackenzie also suffered severe injuries in the lightning strike, but both she and Lori were able to walk out of the hospital thanks to the quick actions of Ava, the 911 dispatcher, first responders, and the medical staff at Health First in Arnold Palmer Children's Hospital. Ava and first responders were honored during a special ceremony where they received certificates and challenge coins for their bravery. Ava, Lori, and Mackenzie also spent time together during the emotional ceremony. And again, UC Principal James Reamer from Merritt Island High School, he attended the event and showed his pride for Ava and her actions. Lori also recently started attending Merritt Island High School after recovering from her injury. These are sometimes the otherwise unsung heroes across our community who at the unlikely young age step forward, demonstrate bravery and courage, and reach out to our community resources to save lives, literally. And I just don't think it can be understated how proud we are of Ava for her bravery, her courage, and keeping her wits about her in the midst of a very, very scary and dangerous situation. So Ava, we're very proud of you.
All right. I just, I just have one pretty quick one, and that is, I know it seems like it has been forever, but this is our first time together since school started. And like I said, it seems like forever ago. But I just have to give a shout out to our entire team for the yeoman's work that they have done to start off the school year. It certainly has not been without challenges and tribulations, but the team has been more committed than ever at every level of the organization, from our transportation folks and our custodial teams and our, obviously, our teachers and our media specialists that are facing their own challenges. And, you know, our, our leadership teams at the schools, and, and you, you name it, across the board. Everybody has just really stepped up to take on those challenges with their head high and determination that we're gonna do what's right for our kids. So just a huge thank you to all of you.
All right. That is now going to bring us to the adoption of the agenda. Dr. Mullins?
Madam Chair and members of the Board, on this evening's agenda, we have the Administrative Staff Recommendations, the Final Budget Hearing, which includes a presentation, time for public comment, and five items for Board action. One recognition, one resolution, one presentation, 37 consent items, two action items, one information item, and one board discussion topic. Changes made to the agenda since released to the public include the addition of Items F-21, Financial Statements for Period Ending April 30, 2022, and I-60, Budget Amendments for June 30, 2022. Revisions were made to A-7, Administrative Staff Recommendations, A-8, Final Budget Hearing Presentation, A-12, 2023 Budget Adoption, D-18, Transportation Update Presentation, F-52, Viera High, Viera, Viera High School Classroom Edition, H-59, Procurement Solicitations, and K-61, Legislative Platform Issues.
All right. Board, I would like to request a motion on this very specifically, if you all will indulge, and that is to move Item B-16 to immediately after adoption of the agenda to allow us to do our recognition prior to the budget hearing, if the Board would be so kind.
I move that we move.
Chair just said it.
B-16, yes.
Second.
Thank you. All in favor, please signify by saying aye. Aye. Any opposed? Same sign? All right. Motion passes 5-0. Mr. Gibbs, do I need to now adopt the amended motion? Or the agenda as amended? Okay. So I will entertain a motion from the Board to... Motion in a second. All in favor, please signify by saying aye. Aye. Any opposed? Same sign? Motion passes 5-0. And with that, we are going to move to Item B-16. We're getting there. Hold on. All right. So that puts us at recognition of visitors, guests, and staff. Dr. Mullins?
I was expecting you to go to Dr. Thedee. Sorry.
I got you. No worries. Dr. Beth Thedee, Deputy Superintendent, Chief HR Officer, will provide tonight's recognition on the 2023 Principal Achievement Award for Outstanding Leadership and Outstanding Assistant Principal Achievement Award. Dr. Thedee?
Thank you so much, Ms. Belford, Board, Dr. Mullins. And thank you for your flexibility this evening. We really appreciate it. It is my honor and pleasure to announce our Principal and Assistant Principal of the Year Awards for Brevard Public Schools. The Principal Achievement Awards for Outstanding Leadership and the Outstanding Assistant Principal Achievement Awards were established in 1988 to recognize exemplary principals and assistant principals for their contributions to not only their schools, but also their communities. The program honors principals and assistant principals who have spearheaded initiatives to increase student performance, promote safe learning environments, and establish partnerships with parents and community members. We know and appreciate the challenges of being a school administrator, and all of our finalists and winners being honored tonight exemplify true leadership, determination, and professionalism in working with teachers, staff, parents, district, and the community to ensure they embody the mission of this school district, to serve every student with excellence as the standard. They are representative of all of the exemplary school leaders we are so fortunate to have in BPS. Joining us for the recognition tonight will be Joe Flora, President, and Gary Shifrin, Executive Director of the Brevard Association of School Administrators, along with Nancy Thompson and Malak Hamad from the Community Credit Union. And just so you know, Community Credit Union is a member-owned financial institution that has a very long history of supporting Brevard Public Schools, and tonight is no exception. They'll be providing our winners with a check and some goodie bag. We've had the privilege this year of honoring at this board meeting not only the winners from this year and the finalists from this year, but also from the two previous years where we have not been able to bring honorees to a board meeting for recognition. In addition, we are also, I said this, we're going to honor finalists this year, which we have not done previously as well. Each of our Principal and Assistant Principal of the Year winners will receive a $500 check and a goodie bag from our amazing business partner, Community Credit Union, and a $500 check, flowers, and a gift card from Brevard Public Schools. Our 2023 finalists for Principal and Assistant Principal of the Year will each receive a 2,000, I'm sorry, a $250 check and flowers from Brevard Public Schools. Prior to beginning the recognitions, I'm going to provide Mr. Gary Shifrin with Brevard Association of School Administrators a moment at the mic to say a few words, and then I'll be back to start the awards. Mr. Shifrin?
Good evening, everybody. On behalf of the Brevard Association of School Administrators and the Community Credit Union, I want to thank the Superintendent and School Board for taking the time to recognize these outstanding educators who hold very important roles in our school system. Although we all agree that the teacher is the most important person for the success of our students, it needs to be said that without the support of a great principal and assistant principal, our teachers would struggle as they perform their jobs. Our administrators provide the necessary resources, the motivation, the research, the encouragement, and so many other aspects of school life that allows our teachers to bring out the best in our students for their success. Our administrators put in so many hours as they leave home to go to work in the dark, and in many instances, arrive back home well beyond sundown. And most of them do not know what a Monday to Friday job is as they are attending the many sporting events, community meetings, fundraisers, Odyssey of the Mind competition, robotics, future problem solving, dinner fundraisers, a drama or band performance, and that is only a few of the many tasks that school administrators are involved in on the weekends. And I would add that the accountability issue has become so important over the past years that administrators are held responsible for literally everything that happens in their school. We ask so much of our administrators, and in Brevard County, I can tell you that your administrators do an awesome job. Without their expertise and total commitment, we would not be as successful as we have been over the years, where we are indeed one of the top districts in the state. And let me take a moment to comment on the amazing work our administrators have done over the past two years with the pandemic. No one, and I mean no one, could have ever predicted what COVID would do to turn our education upside down. The demands not only placed on our teachers, but also on our administrators, stretched them like nothing anybody could imagine. It was not enough to do what you had been trained to do, but during the past two years, administrators were having to implement new creative programs to keep our students and staff safe, as well as deliver instructional programs to ensure our students were progressing and learning. We are so proud of all of you that are being recognized tonight. You represent the very best we find in our awesome administrators. This recognition puts you in an elite group of former principals and assistant principals of the year. As a former superintendent once told me, this is a recognition that can never be taken away from you. Indeed, congratulations are in order, and you have much to be proud of.
Thank you, Mr. Shifrin. I'm going to start with the honorees from our 2021 Principal and Assistant Principal of the Year Program and move forward to this year's honorees. We're gonna take a photo of each one in each group individually, and then at the end, we'll do one large group photo of all of the honorees. At this time, I would like for School Board Chairperson, Mrs. Belford, Superintendent Dr. Mark Mullins, Mr. Joe Flora, Principal at Space Coast, Junior Senior High, and President of the Brevard Schools, Brevard Association of School Administrators, Mr. Gary Shifrin, Executive Director of the, of FASSA, and Ms. Nancy Thompson and Ms. Malak Hamad with Community Credit Union to join us in recognizing these outstanding administrators tonight, along with our first honoree, Chris Reed, former principal at Endeavor Elementary School, current Director of Student Services, and our first honoree to come to the podium. Come on up, Mr. Reed. So we're gonna let Mr. Reed gather his goodies and come on over here, and then I'm gonna talk about him for a moment.
How much is that check for?
Go over there.
How much is it for? A thousand dollars?
I think so.
Hi, Chris. Put a zero on it.
Go ahead over, guys. Chris Reed is our 2021 Principal of the Year winner who began his journey serving Endeavor, the Endeavor community in October 2018. Upon his arrival, Endeavor Elementary School was identified by the state as a school in turnaround status. Under his leadership, Mr. Reed created a sense of urgency in meeting the needs of all students and worked diligently to renew Endeavor's status as a community school to provide health care and family support services at the school. In addition, he is a leader among leaders, and he shares coaching and academic progress monitoring systems with Brevard and state leaders. Please join me in congratulating Mr. Chris Reed as the Brevard Public Schools 2021 Principal of the Year. Congratulations. Thank you. The next person that we're going to recognize is not present this evening. She, Teri Colaga, our 2021 Assistant Principal of the Year, retired shortly after receiving this award. But I wanted to take a moment and just honor her accomplishments. So she's not going to be up here tonight. We will deliver her, her goodies to her individually. Ms. Colaga was a Rockledge Raider since 1980, 1995, first hired as a social studies teacher and then becoming the Dean of Students and Curriculum AP for 21 years. She served as a mentor to countless new assistant principals over the years and was passionate about her school, her community, and most importantly, the success of every student at Rockledge High School. Mrs. Colaga is the epitome of the Rock and what it means to bleed Raider blue. Congratulations to Ms. Colaga. Our next Principal of the Year and Assistant Principal of the Year honorees are from 2022, Mr. Judd Kaminsky and Ms. Denise Stewart. Would both of you please come up and join us at the front of the room? So I'm going to start with Mr. Kaminsky. Mr. Kaminsky, our 2022 Principal of the Year, began his tenure at Palm Bay Magnet High School in January 2016. Having worked in the community and also as a graduate of Palm Bay High School, he knew many of the parents, students, and community members and was able to immediately build upon those relationships. Mr. Kaminsky encourages students to do their best and promotes their successes through the Palm Bay Magnet High School Facebook page. Palm Bay Magnet High School offers students a variety of opportunities to include over 20 advanced placement courses, dual enrollment courses, and a variety of CTE courses, 20 advanced placement courses, dual enrollment courses, and a variety of CTE courses, and is proud to be the only school in the county to offer a special program with Florida Institute of Technology. The Pirates to Panthers program allows Pompe Bay High School students to take classes at FIT during their 11th and 12th grade years free of charge, and students who successfully complete six credit hours with a 3.0 grade point average will be automatically accepted for admission. Mr. Kaminsky is a strong professional leader who is committed to the success of his students, staff, and Pompe Bay High School. Please join me in congratulating Judd Kaminsky as Brevard Public Schools 2022 Principal of the Year. Now to Ms. Denise Stewart. Receiving Brevard's 2022 Assistant Principal of the Year award is Denise Stewart, who received this award while Assistant Principal at Cocoa High School. She is now principal at Cocoa High School, so congratulations twice. Since arriving at Cocoa, Ms. Stewart has worked tirelessly to become part of the fabric that makes up the Cocoa High School community. She has a tenacious belief in her students' abilities and is involved in all academic decisions made for and with those students. Because of Ms. Stewart's passion for all students, she spearheaded a pathway for students to dual enroll at Eastern Florida State College called Tigers to Titans. This new pathway focuses on non-traditional dual enrollment students and expands opportunities for not just high school, but also after graduation. Please join me in congratulating Denise Stewart as BPS's 2022 Assistant Principal of the Year. Congratulations. Give them just a second, and then I'm going to start with the next ones. New this year, we are also honoring our two finalists for 2023 Assistant Principal and Principal of the Year, Ms. Jackie Ingrada and Ms. Heather Smith. Would you both please come up and join us in the front of the room? The decision to determine the representatives for this year's Principal and Assistant Principal of the Year award was made exceptionally difficult by the high-caliber administrators we are so fortunate to have in Brevard Public Schools, and we wanted to ensure that we also recognize this year's finalists as well as our winners. I'm going to start with Ms. Jackie Ingrada. Ms. Jackie Ingrada from Edgewood Junior Senior High School is our BPS finalist for 2023 Principal of the Year and is a master mentor leader who has served students and staff at Edgewood Junior Senior High for over six years. Because Ms. Ingrada is a nationally-trained mentor, she has a deep understanding of how to be supportive of all training needs of her teachers, and she looks for them to always be the best they can be for students. When the staff at Edgewood were asked what they feel has been Mrs. Ingrada's single biggest contribution to the culture at Edgewood, the most common answer is her focus on the whole child and the training she has brought to the school with the same focus. Please join me in congratulating Ms. Ingrada as finalist for a BPS 2023 Principal of the Heather Smith, who is now the principal at Central Middle School, was previously the Assistant Principal at Viera High School and is our finalist for Assistant Principal of the Year. Mrs. Smith makes every decision with students' best interests in mind, and her intentional work the past four years at Viera High has significantly impacted student achievement, student culture, and the staff on campus. She is considered a leader among her peers and shares best practices with other assistant principals through coaching and mentoring new assistant principals. Please join me in congratulating Ms. Heather Smith as a finalist for BPS 2023 Assistant Principal of the Year. It is now my honor to introduce and congratulate our 2023 Brevard Public Schools Principal and Assistant Principal of the Year, Ms. Blair Lovelace and Ms. Kelly Grugan. Would you both please come forward? Blair Lovelace, our winner of the 2023 Principal of the Year award, has been the principal at Coquina Elementary School since 2017. Coquina is a Title I school serving a diverse population. During her five years at Coquina, Ms. Lovelace has worked tirelessly to improve instruction for all students. When Ms. Lovelace took over as principal, the school grade was a D. Coquina is now a B under her leadership. From her first day at Coquina, Ms. Lovelace made it her mission to have targeted focus on core, strong core instruction for all students. She knew for student achievement to approve that the development of relationships with students, families, and staff needed to be the priority, and it still is today. Ms. Lovelace is constantly being reflective on the work she and her staff are doing as she says, "You can't be set on something that's not working." Her recognition of the need for collaboration and communication have been essential, as she is constantly working with her teachers and leadership team on what the data show and how to use data to move student achievement forward. Her students are her biggest fans, and when asked to describe Ms. Lovelace, these are just a few of the words that they say. She's interesting, uplifting, supportive, she loves us, and she's amazing. Ms. Lovelace's leadership at Coquina has positively influenced all aspects of the school with the greatest impact, being student achievement for all students, a legacy that will last for years to come. Please join me in congratulating Ms. Blair Lovelace as our BPS's 2020 Principal of the Year.
Oh, the bell.
So I'm going to take a second. If anyone knows Ms. Lovelace, she knows her in her school bell, right?
Love the bell.
And I would suggest that we ring this bell as a ceremonial recognition that we send your applications to be Principal of the Year for the state of Florida with great anticipation. I put you at the top of the list in a second. We're so proud of you. Ring the bell.
Receiving Brevard's 2023 Assistant Principal of the Year award is Kelly Grugan, who at the time of the award was the Assistant Principal at Riviera Elementary School and is now the Assistant Principal at Gardendale Separate Day School. Ms. Grugan is a go-getter with a can-do attitude who will find a way to support all stakeholders while keeping student achievement as the focus. When data showed a particular grade level weakness, Ms. Grugan worked diligently to form a plan with the teachers to improve student achievement and student performance while providing feedback and support to ensure the plan was successful. Ms. Grugan has handled some very difficult situations this past school year while graciously covering other schools, and during these, she has demonstrated true leadership by acting according to established procedures while all the time remaining calm and in control. Please join me in congratulating Ms. Kelly Grugan as BPS's 2023 Assistant Principal Thank you. We're going to do one group picture of everybody, so if you all will stay up there, I'm going to bring everybody else back up.
Board, as our esteemed guests are filtering out of the room, I do have a request from one of our peers for an additional motion on a rearrangement on the agenda.
Sure, motion.
I have a request for an additional rearrangement on the agenda.
Motion to rearrange.
Ms. Campbell.
Ms. Belford, I move that we make one more adjustment to the agenda and move item C-17, our National Suicide Prevention Month Resolution Proclamation, to now before we move on to our administrative staff recommendations.
I have a motion. Do I have a second? I have a second. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
I think we didn't give you any heads up.
She's hitting me. She wanted a second, so I heard her say it. Absolutely.
All in favor, please signify by saying aye. Any opposed, same sign. Motion passes 5-0. So that then is going to take us into... Yes, our resolution. Tonight's resolution is to approve the month of September as National Suicide Prevention Month. Mr. Russell Brune, Chief Strategic Communications Officer, will read the resolution. Mr. Brune? Sorry, I guess I could have given you some warning on that.
No, I'm coming. Good evening, everybody. This is also National Suicide Prevention Week, well, so it's appropriate. Whereas September is designated as National Suicide Prevention Month, as recognized by the National Association of Mental Illness, and whereas many health officials and community leaders locally, state, and nationally understand that mental illness is a significant issue of concern, particularly among our youth, and whereas the COVID-19 pandemic had detrimental effect on many students' mental health, and whereas we realize that to address mental health issues requires more open and honest discussions about mental health, and whereas one major hurdle to removing the stigma attached to mental health treatment and discussion, and whereas parents, leaders, administrators, coaches, mentors, public officials, and peer students recognize the importance of emotional health, and whereas we can all play a valuable role in assisting others who may show symptoms of stress, depression, anxiety, or mental illness, now therefore be resolved that the Brevard Public School Board supports the education of staff, parents, and students on symptoms of and help for mental health problems, and be it further resolved that Brevard Public School staff will encourage a positive, safe school environment and encourage helping others while also promoting access to school-based mental health supports and recognizing when young people are at risk for or experiencing mental health problems, adopted by the members of the Brevard Public School Board, Brevard County, Florida, at the regular open public meeting held on the eighth day of September 2022.
Thank you, Mr. Brune. I'll entertain a motion. Moved by Ms. Stinkin, seconded by Ms. Campbell. Is there any discussion?
I would just say that we've witnessed tonight a lot of the people who are intricately involved in the mental health response of our schools. We've had assistant coaches, mentors, volunteers, our administrators, you know, of course, we've had, you know, teachers, and we're going to be talking about, you know, bus drivers later, and so I'm just so thankful that our staff, but also our community, has come around us, and we, and it's not, we're not done. We need more mentors, more volunteers to be a part of the equation, along with our community support. You know, we have many members of our community here tonight to join us tonight in this recognition, but I'm just thankful that we were able to see how many times did we hear in that recognition of our administrators alone and in our assistant coach that, what an impact they had on their students and as well as their peers and the teachers who work with, under them, and so what a great recognition of them. It just all fits together in our, in our agenda for this evening.
Absolutely. Thank you, Ms. Campbell. Any additional discussion?
There's a lot I want to say here. I don't want to discuss a lot of stuff. This is amazing, so thank you.
Absolutely. Anyone else? All right, all in favor, please signify by saying aye. Any opposed, same sign. The motion passes 5-0. Yes, and thank you to our guests who joined us for the resolution this evening as well.
Good evening. I'm Jeanette Ginlang with Space Coast Health Foundation, and I want to thank you for this opportunity to say a few words about the resolution on mental health. Many of you know that the mission of the Space Coast Health Foundation is to enhance the health and wellness of everyone in Brevard. In the more than 10 years that we've been in existence, we've collaborated on numerous projects with the schools as it relates to this mission, and I thank you for those opportunities to do so. Of course, this mission involves mental health, which statistics show is one of our community's most pressing health needs, which is why it is the foundation's number-one priority. Our recent released Community Health Needs Assessment for the Space Coast showed that 27% of Brevard residents were experiencing fair-to-poor mental health. That's up from 16.2% just three years ago. For our children between the ages of 5 and 17, that figure has jumped from 11% three years ago to 16.1% this year. Obviously, we are concerned. At the foundation, we use task forces comprised of health officials and community leaders, including representatives from the school district. I want to thank Chris Moore and Jana Jenkins and Kelly Sariah for their participation in these meetings. These task forces help us to prioritize resources and make decisions on grant distributions. Last year, at one of our Behavioral Health Task Force meetings, it came to our attention about recent suicides of schoolchildren on the Space Coast. We also were informed that some of these potential tragedies were averted because school staff were trained and made aware of the real possibility of students harming themselves. I want to publicly thank the school staff for their quick action. We have enormous gratitude to you for averting what could have been a tragedy and saving students' lives. Upon learning this, we decided to create a committee to specifically look at the issues of student mental health and suicide and find areas where we, as a foundation and as a community, could help. Catherine Goddard from the Catholic Charities Central Brevard, who is here with me tonight, chairs this task force. And because we knew we needed student input as we moved through this discussion, we were fortunate to have a Bank of America Leadership Summer Intern Student on our staff to help. Her name is Hannah Saleh. She's a senior at West Shore and is also here tonight. Hannah has agreed to continue her work with the committee and to help us. Thank you, Hannah. We, as a foundation, are committed to helping the district on its mission to improve mental health services and student resources. We also want to assist in rallying students, parents, and community and business leaders to focus on this issue of mental health. One way to help is to start by reducing the stigma associated with it. This resolution will go a long way in assisting our efforts, and we appreciate your support. I'd now like to give Catherine an opportunity to give you a little bit of information on the work of the subcommittee.
Thank you, Jeanette, and thank you to the school board for allowing me to share just a few words with you. I want to say a very special thank you before I go on to... I want to say a very special thank you before I go on to Kelly Haskins, who's here with us tonight, from the Launch Credit Union, whose son, Hunter, died by suicide one year ago. Hunter was a Merritt Island High School graduate who took his life during his first year as a student at UCF. Thank you, Kelly, for being a part of our subtask force, for lending your experience and your strength to our suicide prevention efforts in Brevard. And as some of you may know, she has put together a number of suicide awareness events for this Saturday on Merritt Island, under the theme of You Matter Merritt Island. And I have to say, Kelly, I am awe-inspired by your bravery and your drive through your grief. Thank you. There has been an increase in the reported youth suicidal thoughts, attempts, and completions in the county of Brevard, but the data for this remains incomplete at this time. The Florida Health Charts shows that the death rate by suicide has risen for youth from zero to age 19 in Brevard to 1.4 in 100,000 in the year 2020. This compares to a 3.1 per 100,000 overall for our state. As a parent of two teen daughters, my eldest of which Hannah, is a survivor of the Sandy Hook School shootings almost a decade ago, I am very much aware of the consequences of unnoticed and unattended mental health issues and their cost to our families and to our community. The Youth Prevention Suicide Subtask Force is comprised of members of our community, lifetime counseling, Brevard Public Schools, Brevard Cares, the National Center for Innovation and Excellence, Catholic Charities, and Space Coast Health Foundation members. The task force exists to create strategies and make recommendations to the Behavioral Health Task Force on actions to close the stigma gap that exists between youth and their parents or adult caregivers, on emerging mental health issues, and to create a readily accessible coping skill connection and implementation and support for youth throughout our county. By these efforts, we will spark the difficult conversations, to create a supportive and
All right, Dr. Mullins, we are moving to administrative staff recommendations, are
responsive environment for our youth, and empower our young people to help themselves
you ready?
Yes, I think I have refound my place in all of the adjustments.
and each other get connected before suicide becomes a viable option in their thought processes. This resolution, this coming together of our school and our community, will give us
Ms. Belford and members of the board, there are two items for your consideration.
Do you hear a motion?
the opportunity to stretch farther, to reach out, to lean in into the lives of our young
Moved by Ms. McDougal, seconded by Ms. Campbell, page three, Ms. Jenkins.
Thank you.
people, and I thank you very much.
Oh, you don't have a page three, never mind. Thank you, we appreciate all the work you all are doing.
No, I'm lost now.
Administrative staff recommendations.
Thank you.
So I have a motion and I have a second, any discussion? All in favor, please signify by saying aye. Aye, any opposed, same sign, motion passes 5-0. Dr. Mullins.
Thank you. I'd like to take this opportunity to recognize and congratulate Ms. Tina Myla, who is here with us this evening. Ms. Myla is being reclassed from the position of ESE Support Specialist and Administrative Support to the position of Assistant Principal at Space Coast Junior/Senior High School, effective September 12th. Congratulations.
Hi, thank you so much. I want to thank Dr. Fontaine, the ESE side of the house, been doing it a long time and learned a ton, but super happy to join the Space Coast team, I've been with them for two years as their staffer, so excited to be part of their administrative team, they are phenomenal, and I'm just thrilled, so thank you, thank you, Dr. Sullivan, Dr. Flora, I'm really excited, thank you.
Go Vipers!
All right, that is going to move us to the final budget hearing portion of the agenda, Dr. Mullins.
All right, first, Ms. Lasinski, our Chief Financial Officer, will provide a presentation on the proposed 2022-2023 millage levy and final budget. Ms. Lasinski?
Gave you the look, didn't she?
I just slid it out.
Before I start, I wanted to acknowledge Susan Denyer and Diane Lichtenstein for their incredible heavy lift of completing the annual financial report and building the FY23 budget. These two ladies have just amazing experience, and they've come in and looked at processes that we have done since, I don't know, the dawn of time, and they've looked at those processes, they've automated, they've said, why do we do this? They are just making incredible changes, and they're both five-star servant leaders that I can't say enough about, and I can't explain of how amazing they both are. That said, I also have a lot of gratitude for the entire BPS team. We couldn't do anything without ET, we couldn't do, you know, the grant managers, the resource advisors, the bookkeepers, we count on everyone, and we all know that there's a lot of vacancies for teachers, for bus drivers, but also accountants and budgeteers and bookkeeper turnover, there's just a lot out there, and these two ladies just pulled it together with their influence and experience, and I just can't thank them enough.
Thank you, ladies, we appreciate you.
Thank you. So this is the second and final budget hearing to adopt the FY23 millage rates as well as the FY23 tentative budget. This tentative budget was built with our four guiding principles in mind: protection of an excellent education, protection of an effective workforce, maintain the fiscal strength of the district, and protection of the taxpayer interests. Tonight's public hearing agenda includes a presentation on proposed millage and budget, an opportunity for public comment and board member discussion, a request that you adopt a resolution setting the proposed total millage levy that was set by the state to support the FY23 tentative budget, a request that you adopt resolutions approving the FY23 tentative budget as presented, and request authorizing the superintendent and staff to perform all necessary actions to comply with the truth in millage requirements. The truth in millage legislation was enacted in 1980 to redirect taxpayers' concern over rising taxes from the property appraisers who do not control the levying of taxes toward the government taxing authorities that set the tax rates. The truth in millage legislation requirements are detailed under Florida statutes, TRIM timelines are very prescriptive in law, and the clock started on July 1st. The total timeline to budget adoption is 80 days. The statute dictates the order of business during the budget hearings as laid out in the previous slide, and TRIM requires two public hearings for open discussion of the millage rates and the proposed budget. Millage is a term that represents the tax rate levied on property. One mil is equivalent to $1 in taxes per $1,000 in taxable value. If your home has a taxable value of $100,000 and you're assessed a mil tax rate, you will pay $100 in taxes. The Florida Education Finance Program is a mechanism by which state and local funds are allocated to Florida school districts. The Florida Legislature sets the required local effort millage rates, and the school districts receive their rate no later than July 19th in the FEFP second calculation. The school board must levy the required local effort millage rates in order to receive any state funding under the Florida Education Finance Program. The total proposed millage related to school funding for FY23 school year totals 5.495 mils. This millage rate will generate revenue for the general operating and capital outlay funds. The required local effort rate adjusts year to year while the discretionary and local capital remain fixed. The required local effort and discretionary millage makes up the district's local operating funds at $240.1 million, and on the capital side, the local capital improvement millage generates $90.2 million at a 96% collection rate. As stated in the prior slides, the board must levy the required local effort in order to receive BPS's total FY23 school operating funding from the state. The discretionary local effort millage will garner $45 million. When combined with the RLE, we get the district's local portion of $240.1 million. This is 40% of the FY23 FEFP school operating funding. The state funding is $370.7 million, and the total FEFP calculation is $610.8 million. The total FEFP includes a pass-through of over $106 million for charter schools and private school scholarships. When a school district levies .748 mils and it generates an amount of funds per FTE that is less than the state average of $719.62, the school district will receive a discretionary millage compression supplement that will bring the district up to the state average. In the case of Brevard, our .748 mils generated $596.62 per FTE. In order to get the state average, the state provided an additional $123 per FTE, which equates to $9.3 million. The local capital improvement millage, or LCI, will provide the district $90.1 million. $37.6 million comes off the top as it is used to pay the district's debt service, which covers principal and interest payments for previously bonded debt that was issued primarily between the years 1996 to 2008 to build schools and provide for major renovations at our older schools. LCI contributes $10.3 million towards maintenance labor costs. LCI also pays for the district's property insurance, which leaves $36.2 million for capital project needs throughout the district. This slide depicts the historic millage rates over the last 13 years. FY2009 was the highest annual tax roll prior to the Great Recession. Property values continue to increase each year since FY13, with the most significant change this year. Last year, when I presented this slide, the EDR's estimate for Brevard's FY23 school tax roll was an increase of 6.9%, and you can see it came in at 20.99%, and it did not come close to the $62.6 billion until around 2025. This slide illustrates the changes in school-related property taxes for a homeowner over a seven-year span. In this example, we started with a home valued at $200,000 in 2016 and increased the assessed value by 3% each year, the maximum allowable under Save Our Homes. In 2016, the home would have generated roughly $1,210 in school-related property tax. If the owner qualified for Save Our Homes by 2022 school year, the assessed value of that same home would be $238,810. Based on that valuation, the school-related property tax would be $1,174. This is a decrease of $35.18 from the 2021 tax year, and across five year, a total decrease So what does this mean? You can see that a $3.21 a day is critical in serving our children's education. This is less than the cost of a Starbucks coffee per day and pays for a tutor once a week for one hour. Over the last several years, we faced much uncertainty about the economy and how life after the pandemic would look like in the county, state, nation, and globally. Early 2022 has been challenging with massive supply disruptions resulting from the ongoing pandemic, Russia's invasion of Ukraine. Additionally, the conflict is a major driver in increased oil and food prices. Job openings across the nation are at all-time highs, which we are all well aware as we posture ourselves to recruit and retain Brevard's best to teach and support our community's future. This is a long way of saying our proposed budget is our best estimate of revenue against FY 2009 was the highest annual tax roll prior to the Great Recession. Property values continue to increase each year since FY '13 with the most significant change this year. Last year, when I presented this slide, the EDR's estimate for Brevard's FY '23 school tax roll was an increase of 6.9%. And you can see it came in at 20.99%. And it did not come close to the $62.6 billion until around 2025. This slide illustrates the changes in school-related property taxes for a homeowner over a seven-year span. In this example, we started with a home valued at $200,000 in 2016 and increased the assessed value by 3% each year, the maximum allowable under Save Our Homes. In 2016, the home would have generated roughly $1,210 in school-related property tax. If the owner qualified for Save Our Homes by 2022 school year, the assessed value of that same home would be $238,810. Based on that valuation, the school-related property tax would be $1,174. This is a decrease of $35.18 from the 2021 tax year and across five year, a total decrease of $35.35. So what does this mean? You can see that a $3.21 a day is critical in serving our children's education. This is less than the cost of a Starbucks coffee per day and pays for a tutor once a week for one hour. Over the last several years, we faced much uncertainty about the economy and how life after the pandemic would look like in the county, state, nation, and globally. Early 2022 has been challenging with massive supply disruptions resulting from the ongoing pandemic, Russia's invasion of Ukraine. Additionally, the conflict is a major driver in increased oil and food prices. Job openings across the nation are at all-time highs, which we are all well aware as we posture ourselves to recruit and retain Brevard's best to teach and support our community's future. This is a long way of saying our proposed budget is our best estimate of revenue against expenses at a snapshot in time. This budget is not money in the bank. We are optimistic about our enrollment as membership continues to grow and we are also very aware that rising inflation will directly and indirectly increase our expenses. Using a common phrase from my military days, no plan survives first contact. We are prepared to make necessary adjustments to ensure we have resources available to meet the needs of every student. This is the district's total proposed budget in summary form. The general fund is where most operating expenditures are paid and provided. And about 97% of the general operating dollars come from the FFFP. The debt service fund is used to pay for the outstanding bonds of the district. A primary resource is the transfer from local capital improvement funding. The capital projects fund accounts for major construction and renovation projects. The district receives minimum state support. Our primary sources are sales surtax, property tax, and impact fees. The special revenue fund consists of food services, federal education stabilization funds, schools internal accounts, and special revenue fund other, which encompasses federal grants. The food service program continues to be a self-supporting operation with a $68.7 million budget. Its funding is primarily from federal reimbursement, USDA commodities, and local sales. The projected budget for federal education stabilization funds is $149.3 million. The purpose of these federal dollars are to address the impact of COVID-19, to include the areas most impacted by the disruption and closure of schools, sustain operations, and support academic acceleration. Other stabilization grants that come in throughout the year will be amended into the budget as approved. The school internal funds budget, the school internal funds budget, is $21.2 million. These funds are administered by each individual school. Parents and communities support, generate funding for this account. Examples include funds from ticket sales, fees, gifts, contributions made by music or athletic, booster clubs, civic organizations, parent-teacher organizations, and school fundraising. These funds pay for items such as uniforms, field trips, travel, and sports officiating. Revenues and related expenditures decreased in FY '21 and returned to pre-COVID levels this past year. For 2023 school year, we expect activity levels at the same or slightly higher as last year. The special revenue other funds budget is $63.5 million. The source of these dollars are from federal grant programs. These revenues are restricted for specific purposes such as Title I, IDEA, Perkins. Perkins funds and expands opportunity for every child to explore and follow career and technical education programs and pathway to earn credentials. The internal service fund budget is $93.7 million. And this includes the district's medical property and general liability insurance and workers' compensation claims. An enterprise fund is our school-age childcare program. Their budget is $5.1 million. This is self-supporting fund through customer charges. This slide projects our ending fund balance for FY '23 for all five funds. Using the operating fund as an example, starting with the top box on the left-hand side, you see that our beginning balance, which is also our FY '22 ending balance, is $50.6 million. Going down the column, we established $599.5 million in revenues. Transfers in at $28.4 million, which includes revenue for facility maintenance, labor, property insurance, and capital for charter schools, which you also know as PICO. We are also projecting to receive a transfer of $2.3 million from the enterprise fund. This gives us a total revenue of $627.9 million. Less estimated expenditure leaves a projected FY '23 fund balance of $48.5 million. The bottom box depicts how the fund balance is reported. Non-spendable fund balance are amounts that are not in a spendable form and this represents inventory of $676,000 and prepaid property insurance. Restricted amounts are constrained to specific purposes by the providers. The $10.7 million is unspent state categorical balances to be rolled forward. Assigned fund balance are amounts intended for a purpose. The $12.3 million includes $5.7 million of project balances from grant donations and school operating, unspent balances, encumbrances of $3 million, and healthcare infusion of $2.7 million. Unassigned is where you'll find our board contingency funding. So that is the presentation and we recommend the adoption of the proposed total millage levy that was set by the state to support the FY '23 tentative budget. And we also recommend that you adopt resolutions approving the FY '23 tentative budget as presented. Are there any questions?
Thank you, Ms. Lusinski. Any questions from Board members before I open up for the public hearing? Nope. All right. The hearing is now open for public comments. We will, in accordance with Florida law, accept the speakers in the following order: the 2023 proposed millage levy, followed by the 2023 final budget. Is there any individual who would like to address the 2023 proposed millage levy? Is there any individual who would like to address the 2023 proposed millage levy? All right. Is there any individual who would like to address the 2023 final budget? Is there any individual who would like to address the 2023 final budget?
Firstly, thank you all for all your hard work. And please don't take any of this as a personal attack. My only concern is that we don't have where the dollars and cents are going. All we have is a general pot of where our money is going. And I feel that that's extremely irresponsible to pass a budget that we don't know where the dollars are going. I've said this countless times, the people need to see where our dollars are being spent. You know, we're talking about almost $1.5 billion here. This isn't a little bit of chump change. This is a lot of money. Could pay a lot of teachers. And now this board is asking to get more of our money. And we don't even know where our money is going now. Have any of you looked at the budget? Have any of you looked at where all of our dollars and cents are going? You're supposed to be up there representing us, protecting us, protecting our interests, providing a quality education for our children, providing a safe environment for our children. We have air conditioning that is out constantly. We have a new system that went into our buses that the first few weeks of school was crashing and people didn't know where their kids were. This is a real problem. We need to know where our money is going. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Delaney. Is there any individual who would like to address the 2023 final budget? Ms. Mersky?
Yeah, I'm curious, is there a website or something where we could see where the money's going?
Yes, and I will be happy to address that when we take a break, if you would like to ask me. Okay? Ms. Mersky?
Good evening, Madam Chair and Board. My name is Sarah Mersky. I'm a wife, mother of two children, Brevard Public Schools, taxpayer, voter, constituent, college student, and I live in District 2 for school board. I just want to echo some of the sentiments that Ms. Delaney had shared. I think your group did a great job and great presentation and it's not a personal attack, but the issue is that there needs to be more transparency as to where the actual dollars are going. Why, you know, there's not amounts on certain contracts that I've asked about. We don't know, I don't understand why our money isn't allocated more equitably across the district as it should be, especially at a school like Endeavor Elementary and our schools in Cocoa. I mean, I don't understand why things aren't where they should be. And, you know, if I was working a job, another job, and I was accountable to my boss, such as the school board is accountable to the taxpayers, at this point, I'd be fired. But it was very interesting, the election results the past couple of weeks. So thanks so much and have a good evening.
Thanks, Ms. Mersky. All right. Is there any individual who would like to address the 2023 final budget? Is there any individual who would like to address the 2023 final budget? All right. The public comment portion of the hearing is now closed. That brings us to the recommendations for the adoption of the proposed millage rates and final budget. Dr. Mullins?
Florida Statute 200.065 requires each taxing authority levying millage to publicly state the name of the taxing authority, the rollback rates, the percentage of change from the rollback rates, and the millage rate to be levied prior to the adoption of the millage levy resolution. In compliance with those requirements, the following needs to be stated. The taxing authority is the School Board of Brevard County, Florida. The 2023 rollback rates are: Required local effort, 3.0520; local discretionary, 0.6338; capital outlay, 1.2710; total rollback rate, 5.9568. The total millage rate to be levied exceeds the total rollback rate by 10.86%. The proposed 2023 millage rates-
Dr. Mullins, can I stop you for just one moment?
Yes.
Our total rollback rate should be 4.9568 and I believe you read it to be 5 points something.
Let me repeat it for the record. I apologize.
It's all good.
So the total rollback rate is 4.9568. The total millage rate to be levied exceeds the total rollback rate by 10.86%. The proposed 2023 millage rates are: Required local effort, 3.247; local discretionary, 0.748; capital outlay, 1.500; for a total millage rate, 5.495. Now we will move into the five separate motions for the board to consider. I will read each of these recommendations into the record and request board action. The first item is to adopt the resolution setting the required local effort, local discretionary, and capital outlay millage range of 5.495 mils for 2023. The written resolution is incorporated into this motion by reference.
What are the wishes of the board? Moved by Ms. McDougall, seconded by Ms. Campbell. Is there any discussion? All in favor, please signify by saying aye. Aye. Any opposed, same sign. Motion passes 5-0.
The next item is to adopt the 2023 final budget in the following amounts. Operating: $678,560,974; Debt Service: $37,997,197; Capital Outlay: $379,694,784; Special Revenue: $302,698,996; Internal Service: $93,676,41; Enterprise: $5,096,815; Subtotal:
You can take a deep breath now. Whew. What are the wishes of the board? Moved by Ms. McDougall? Seconded by Ms. Jenkins. Is there any discussion? All in favor, please signify by saying aye. Aye. Any opposed, same sign. Motion passes 5-0. Dr. Mullins?
Next is to authorize the superintendent to adjust the adopted millage levy and budget due to changes in the certified tax rule.
What are the wishes of the board?
Moved to approve.
Moved by Ms. McDougall, seconded by Ms. Campbell. Any discussion? All in favor, please signify by saying aye. Aye. Any opposed, same sign. Motion passes 5-0.
Next is to authorize the superintendent to forward the adopted millage levy resolution to the Brevard County Property Appraiser and Tax Collector no later than 30 days following the adjournment of the Value Adjustment Board.
What are the wishes of the board? Moved by Ms. McDougall, seconded by Ms. Campbell. Any discussion? All in favor, please signify by saying aye. Aye. Any opposed, same sign. Motion passes 5-0.
And last is to authorize the superintendent to forward the following to the designated state agencies. One, the adopted budget, milli levy resolution, certified tax roll, rollback rates, proposed millage, and certified copies of the advertisements for the proposed budget and millage rate to the State Department of Education. Two, the millage levy resolution, certified tax roll, rollback rates, proposed millage, and certified copies of the advertisements for the proposed budget and millage rate to the Department of Revenue.
What are the wishes of the board? Moved by Ms. McDougall, seconded by Ms. Campbell. Any discussion?
Quick question. Real quick question. The AFFER report to the state, when, I'm sorry, the AFFER report to the state, when does that go to the state? Has that already gone?
I know it's pretty close now. Monday, that's what it is. Can you send us a copy of that AFFER when you send it? Is that okay?
We already have it.
Yeah, we also sent that electronically to you.
Okay, good. But that's the final one. There's no changes to that. That's what's going to the state?
That's what's going to the state.
Okay, perfect, perfect. That's all I needed to know. When it was going to the state was when I was wondering about it. It's going on Monday. Thank you.
Any additional discussion? All in favor, please signify by saying aye. Aye. Any opposed, same sign. Motion passes 5-0. The public hearing is now adjourned.
Could I make one comment before?
Yes, absolutely.
I just wanted to say that, you know, the board has reviewed the proposed budget, all funds, and we submitted to them. Also, the AFFER, which is in great detail of how we spend our dollars. So there's a lot of information on the site that we have and I'm willing to share if you would like to come over. We just completed the cost report, which is incredible detail. Amina, make your eyes cross. So I just want to assure you that this presentation is very, very high level, but the board has received all of these and receives quite a few briefings along the way.
Ms. Lusinski, since you're on that subject, would you mind sharing with our public where on our website they can find all of that detailed information? I know that the cost report may not be posted, but as far as navigating to our budget and the amendments and all of those sorts of things?
I'm gonna look at my-
If you start at the top of the website, go to Departments. You'll go down to an alpha list of all departments and you'll see Financial Services, then you go to the Accounting Services link from there.
Super, thank you. And thank you, Ms. Lysinski, for providing that additional information, we appreciate it.
And we have posted not only the budget, but the AFFER, the Annual Financial Report, and historical documents as well. Everything is available online.
Thank you. All right, we are now going to be moving to presentations. It would be my recommendation, Board, that perhaps we take about a 10-minute recess, recharge, and then we'll come back into presentations, okay?
Sounds good.
All right, we are back in session with a very exciting presentation regarding transportation.
Thank you, Mrs. Belford and the board for a few minutes to, quite frankly, Mr. Susan gave a nice shout out and highlight of our transportation team earlier this evening. And I just wanted to take the opportunity to add my tremendous appreciation and thanks to probably, you know, behind the scenes folks. And I say often when I'm presenting to the community, our bus drivers are the bookends to many of our kids' school day. They're the first to greet them and the last to say goodbye to them at the end of the day. And they provide a tremendous amount of care, attention, and service to our kids across the district. We have transported everywhere from 22,000, 23,000 students, kind of at a high mark. We're in upwards of 17,000 or 18,000 students already this year. So I remind folks that say, oh, what does the school district do over the summer? I said, it takes a little bit of planning to get ready to receive back 66,000 children, all on the same day and within about an hour and a half of each other. That includes a fourth of them being transported by, in many cases, a mode of transportation they may have never taken before. They're like, oh, I guess it does take a little bit, little bit of time to get ready to do that. And behind the scenes, working every day diligently through the summer, not only to transport, remember the summer program we had this year? We had several thousand, a few thousand students participating in our summer academic programs, our enrichment programs, and transportation provided all of that service, which was an unusual year because we don't have routes necessarily for summer. So they had to create all new routes and so on. So I wanted to take the opportunity to put some context behind the scope of the service that our amazing transportation team provided. I'll start with some logistics, if you will. Obviously, we know that Brevard extends 72 miles from north to south. We have 88 school sites, which we transport to. That breaks down to 241 routes daily, over 1,200 runs daily. That includes about 17 double backs. And that's where buses make double trips from one school back and forth to the same school. There are almost 4,600 daily bus stops. And our buses traveled cumulatively just in the first week-ish of the school year over almost 200, excuse me, 130,000 miles across our different buses. We have currently 440 active buses. The average age of our buses is about 9.7 years old. That is actually still well above a favorable industry standard, but much better than where we were several years ago when we were approaching almost a 15-year average age of our bus fleet. Fortunately, with the utilization or the benefit of our sales cert tax initiative, which relieved the strain and stress on the capital budget, we've been able to now for the last five years, purchase approximately 25 to 30 new buses every year and bring down that average age. Industry standard continually pushes us to as close to five years as possible because then you can maintain the majority of your buses still on their five-year warranty. Unfortunately, we're not quite there and probably won't get there with a 25 to 30 bus renewal every year. If we could bump that up closer to 50 buses a year, we could likely maintain closer to a five-year average. But that may be difficult with the constraints of the budget as we move forward. But I do want to commend our maintenance team, our foreman, our technicians in our bus transportation compound. The only way we're able to stay functional with the average age of the fleet that we have is our team does a phenomenal job. And having served in the role of COO previously, I got an up-close look to see how that all operates. We keep our aging-out buses in our field and we, for lack of a better word, we cannibalize our equipment to keep buses working as functional as possible. And so we're able to utilize our buses longer than I would suggest other organizations would be able to because our technicians just do a great job of maximizing the parts that we have on hand to keep them going. Here is a breakdown of our area projections and the routes and runs that we provide across the district. You can see that our largest concentration of routes and runs is most significant in the south area and then moving into mid-south transportation. So south is down off of University Park Boulevard. And those, that compound serves pretty much all of our schools south of University Park. Our mid-south area transportation, we've been talking, that's the compound at the Pineapple Avenue location. The board knows that we are looking to relocate that site to a new site, hopefully within the next couple of years. And we're continuing the search process for property to be able to do that. Our central area transportation site, certainly a large compound there right off of 520, hosts a, really is our central hub of operations for transportation. You can see they have a significant number of routes and runs out of that location. And then our north area transportation office, up office, State Road, I just had a blank, 46, right?
Off Garden Street.
Garden Street, thank you.
Drayfield.
I kept wanting to say State Road 50, and I know that wasn't right. I wanted to go back just to highlight, I wanted to mention, you can see on this first slide, we have 241 routes daily. That means we have about 240 buses on the road at the same time. But you saw a couple of slides later, well then why do we maintain 400 buses? We have to have, every one of our buses have to go through a multi-step safety review every 30 days. So on any given day, 1/30 of our fleet has to be off the road going through safety check before it can go back on the road. And that's done in our bus compounds by our technicians to meet that safety requirement that's reported to the state. Like every department across Brevard Public Schools and across our community and the country, workforce shortage and workforce challenges continue to remain a difficulty for the Transportation Department. And I say that in one, with frustration in one respect, but with tremendous admiration in the other because our transportation team has come to that challenge with a can-do attitude and is continually reevaluating their processes, their routes, their stops. And I'll talk in a moment how that has become increasingly efficient with the new Reaxium system that we've onboarded this year. But before I do that, I want to state that our recruitment efforts that we've highlighted in the past have certainly included our Transportation Department. And we've done some even additional things. You'll see here that we've put in place referral bonuses for our drivers as well as some sign-on bonuses with some considerable compensation and after a year of completion, an additional $1,000 for our drivers to not only promote recruitment, but also to reinforce retention from a monetary standpoint. All of our onboarding costs for our prospective bus drivers is at no cost. And we've reconfigured our training process. We used to provide CDL training to get your CDL license, and then we would put you in a holding pattern and wait for the hiring process to complete, and then we would get you onboarded. Now you're onboarded before the training. And as long as you get your CDL, you start working and earning a paycheck that same day and are paid for the training that you participated in to get the certification. In addition, Transportation has an open interview window every Wednesday at each compound. They participated in every one of our job fairs across, throughout the summer and at all of these different sites. And we have additional bus driver fairs coming up in those areas. It says these are areas of highest need. I'll show you a breakdown of where our vacancies are concentrated in a moment. And over the last couple of weeks, we've seen some recent resignations in the north area, which has now made that a high-need area. And we're in the process of setting up some job fairs in the north area as well. So here you see a breakdown of our current drivers versus vacancies. We currently have 229 drivers with 45 vacancies. That definitely is putting a strain on our capacity to be able to meet arrival times that we are satisfied with. I'll show that to you in just a moment. But I would also highlight that that's a definite improvement from where we ended last school year with 63 vacancies. So we definitely have, are moving in the right direction. And I know the Transportation Team is continually working to recruit drivers to their department. To be able to meet some of the demands of the driver shortage, the team has just completely dug into the tools and resources available with this new program called Reaxium that they just onboarded a month or two ago. And what it does is it allows them to see in real time in a much more efficient manner where the buses are traveling, the time that they're spending at the different stops, and it'll help them better manage routing and rerouting to save time and be more efficient across their different stops. So I commend our Transportation Team for fully diving into this program and leveraging it for all of the assistance it can provide. Now, you might suggest this is not a slide that we necessarily want to put up, but I have always prescribed of being transparent with our data. And I would never begin to suggest, and I know Mike doesn't either, that a 71%, 72% on-time arrival rate is not something, that is not our goal. That is, that is far from satisfactory. Our goal, in fact, is a minimum of 90%. And we're striving for that by the end of first semester. With that, we're looking at collapsing routes, reroute, or collapsing stops. If we have two stops that are close to each other with two and three kids at them, we can consolidate them. Students may have to walk a little bit further, but collapse that to one stop, picking up five students. And that saves time and provides opportunity to improve our on-arrival time. Our last year, our average is about 82.5% on-time arrival. So we definitely have room to return to where we were providing service last year. But that was, but this year, not only, but we're experiencing, part of the reason that the arrival time is down is our bus utilization from students has grown considerably from last year to this year, which is, which is great news. So I want to take this opportunity to highlight Reaxium again. I'm actually going to go to this slide first. I think it gives a better depiction of what the rollout looked like of this system. It was installed on all buses. They have an iPad-like product on the bus. Students scan their card and it identifies what time they come on the bus and obviously their attendance on that bus ride. Over 21,000 badges were provided to students. And kudos to our partners to get all of the badges printed prior to school. Most of them went out to students during the registration process. And now our bus compounds are providing services to print badges as they're needed. You can see that we've begun to launch our bulletin sent to the school as well as to parents, giving them updates of where buses are, where they are in route. And then very soon, we are planning for by second semester, parents will be able to directly monitor their students' progress on our bus through an app that will be available to them. And they can see exactly where there's, when their student gets on the bus, when they arrive to school, and so on. So definitely, parent notification helps with assuring parents that we know exactly what the experience is that their student is having. It helps us manage customer service better and being increasingly responsive as well as provide, because we can actually see on our system where buses are on the road, we, and if we get notice of a roadblock in front of their route, we can give them assistance on where to go to reroute to avoid extended delays. As well as we can keep our schools increasingly aware of exactly what is going on and when their, they can expect the buses they normally have to arrive in their schools. So with that, I just want to echo again or reiterate my thanks and appreciation and commendation for our Transportation Team and the challenges they faced. I want to extend my sincere and personal thanks to our families for their patience and understanding. I had a dad email me about two weeks ago at 5:00 something in the evening concerned that there was a breakdown in communication and unaware of where a situation with their, where his son was. I didn't get to that email until later in the evening and I, he left his phone number and I was concerned. And I called the dad before I called even Transportation and I said, I hope you have a positive report for me, but because I'm getting right, before I get ready to call my Transportation Team. And the dad was very appreciative of the reach out. And his son had gone home shortly after he had sent the email. He was extremely kind and accommodating in the midst of the uncertainty. And he just thanked us for our work, thanked us for continuing to assure him that we'll get better and that that situation ended positively and sent that on to the Transportation Team. And they quickly went, could go back because we have Reaxium and see exactly where the breakdown was and put a correction in place. And I just want to add to my appreciation to the Transportation Team that as I have had concerns brought to my attention and forward them to the team without exception, they're extraordinarily responsive and following up and providing support and service to our families. And again, I would express my appreciation to our community for their understanding, their patience as we work through this and know that we're committed to continually improve our processes, work towards full staffing in our Transportation Department and continually improving our on-time arrivals and continuing to provide great customer service. Happy to answer any questions the board may have.
I don't have any questions, but I just want to also thank the Transportation Department. And every morning when I'm on Merritt Island driving around and I see the big yellow bus, I want to wave and honk, but I'm afraid that I would make them nervous. And I just so appreciate you all. And I did behind a school bus the other morning on Tropical Trail, and there's a lot of stops on Tropical Trail, let me tell you. So I just want to thank you all for the hard work that you do getting our kids to and from school safely. So thank you so much.
Anybody else? Mr. Susan?
Um.
Please don't make that recommendation public.
Are you going to make that?
No, I'm not. This is, look, we do appear as a little different. All right. Dr. Mullins, one of the things I was going to say is, is that we have, I heard that we're having some people in the north that are resigning and stuff like that. Are we doing the same thing that we do for teachers with a post-interview to find out exactly what it is? And then also, we had spoken before about like our administrators, when we're listening to them before, how the culture, just like you said, they're the bookends, right? And some of the, some of the bus drivers were out there saying, hey, when I pull up to the school, you know what I mean? It would be nice if we were just family. Like, there seems to be like that little disconnect. And I know that you've been doing a great job. And Dr. Miller's amazing and his team's amazing. But if there's a way that we can kind of rally around the flag on that piece, because these kids are, in some cases, are making it very difficult on our bus drivers with some of the discipline that we're seeing on top of the bus. Post-COVID, they have forgotten what their rules are. And quite frankly, some of their parents just don't control them like they should. And our bus drivers are feeling that as the bookends. So there's a way for me to get out there, some sort of a, hey, just thank your bus driver Fridays or something, you know what I mean? Something? I think it would go a long way for us to collaborate as a team. So that's all.
Yeah, I know that our school administrators also greatly appreciate the drivers that bring their kids to school. I want to commend Mike, last, toward the end of last year, he took his staff out to the schools to meet with all of the principals and engage with them personally to, just to build that collaboration and that connection and to build a culture of togetherness and team. And we'll, I'll absolutely echo that message because it's important that we know that we're in this together. And we got to work together to make sure that we maximize the opportunity for our kids.
When I talk about Dr. Miller, one of the things that's funny is, is I get more people tell me about how great he was as a principal also. His legacy, your legacy inside this school district's amazing, man. Because there's people that come up to me all the time, you have no idea. You think you did a good job in transportation? You should have seen him as a principal. So I just wanted to say that to you. Thank you, sir. I'm done now.
Thank you. I will just echo the sentiment of extreme appreciation for you all. I, you know, there, I think there's nothing worse than when you are frantically working in really challenging circumstances to get the calls that, I just got a call from a board member and I need you to check into this stop or this route. And I know I have been guilty of that multiple times this year. And so I apologize for putting that additional pressure on you. But I can't tell you how incredibly appreciative I am that every time I have reached out, you all have gotten on it and looked into it and done what you can do. And it's, you know, we can't fix everything, but where we can make those improvements, you all certainly are doing the yeoman's work to do that and to serve our families and our students and our schools as well. So I, yes, our bus drivers are absolute heroes. And I'll be the first one to admit that I could not be a bus driver. I did have a CDL at one time, but you don't want to recruit me, I promise you. But
Yes, we do.
No, you don't. But our bus drivers are amazing, but the team behind our bus drivers can't be recognized enough either because we know that you guys have really been put through the wringer and asked to do like figuring out routes for the summer program. Like, oh yeah, here, figure this thing out right away so that we can serve our students. And so I just want to make sure that you all know that how very much we appreciate your team as well. So thank you.
And it's mutual. Did you see the story in the newsletter a couple of weeks ago, maybe about a month ago now, where the south area Transportation Department went over to University Park and like pulled weeds and did mulching and all that? So that one got me. You know, I, so I love that it, the partnership works both ways. And they're paying attention to the needs of our schools, just like we want our schools to pay attention to the needs of our drivers and Transportation Department. So, but that one was an amazing story of the whole team pulling together.
Yes, absolutely. Thank you, Ms. Campbell.
I just was reminded of, Ms. Belford, you may remember when we were at Jackson Middle School, on the first day of school, I ran out and was welcoming our kids off the bus. And I hopped on a bus and I think the bus driver's name was Miss Sarah. Forgive me if I got your name wrong. And I said, how are you doing? Just checking on you. How's the new scanning thing going? And she goes, and just as cool as a cucumber, she said, yeah, it's going, it's going really well. The kids are a little slow at it, but it's only going to get better. And that was it. So Mike, you got a great team. They took on the challenge and they're, they've overcome it. So appreciate you and appreciate every one of our drivers for their can-do attitude.
Absolutely. Thank you, Dr. Mullins, for the presentation. Thank you, Mr. Wilson, for all of your work as well. We appreciate you. All right, we're now at the public comments portion of the meeting on agenda items. We have four speakers on agenda items. Therefore, each speaker will receive three minutes. Please note that the time is per speaker, not per agenda item. Topics not specific to agenda items will be moved to the non-agenda portion of the meeting. We have a clock in front of me to help keep track of your time. When your time is over, you'll be asked to stop and allow the next speaker, his or her turn. Always keep in mind that reasonable decorum is expected and your statement should be directed to the board chair. The chair may interrupt. Warn or terminate a participant's statement when time is up. It's personally directed, abusive, obscene, or obscene or irrelevant. Should an individual not observe proper etiquette, the chair may request the individual to leave the meeting. For the audience, please remember that outside of your personal public comment period, your role is as an observer. Therefore, I would ask that you please not disrupt the meeting by interjecting comments or noises during public comments. Since we only have four speakers, I'm going to call them all up at the same time. Anthony Calucci, Katie Delaney, Sarah Merzke, and Connie Rook. If you all wouldn't mind getting on deck on the east wall so that we can get everyone through appropriately, that would be wonderful.
My name is Anthony Calucci. I'm the president of the Brevard Federation of Teachers. Tonight, I'm here to address item F27, instructional staff recommendations. At the last meeting, all five of you rightfully delayed the hiring of a community coach, realizing that the hiring of this coach over a well-qualified teacher is an issue being decided in arbitration. You seem to give clear direction to staff that you wanted your hired outside legal counsel to move the process as quickly as possible to have the arbitration decision prior to the basketball season. I personally reached out to your hired legal counsel and offered a way forward that would likely result in a decision prior to the season. I promptly received a response of no from your counsel and final confirmation of a date that worked for them in November. Which begs the question, what is the role of this board? Do you really believe that staff have more authority than you as elected officials? None of you can explain why all of a sudden the district is choosing to ignore the arbitration from '17, other than some staff think it's a good idea? None of you can explain how a principal can blatantly ignore board policy and not be disciplined. It sure seems that we're back to having a separate set of rules for principals. I urge you to not approve the hiring of the community coach at Cocoa Beach High School, as well as end this arbitration and hire the teacher as a boys varsity coach. And let's be clear, this is a highly effective educator and experienced coach with a proven track record. I'm asking that you follow the very guidance and procedure your HR department has honored for the past five years. But if you choose not to because it's against the advice of staff and BFT prevails in the arbitration, I will not sit by idly. Staff must be held accountable for their poor judgment. I will be back here and in the media calling for the termination of the three staff members who colluded to prevent this well-deserving teacher from getting this position. These staff members will be responsible for using taxpayer dollars to argue this language for the third time in 15 years. I estimate the cost around $100,000. They'll be responsible for the upheaval that this will cause amongst the students on the team and their parents when the teacher ultimately gets a position. These three staff members will have caused an uphill battle for the teacher to earn students' trust when the position is awarded to them. Not to mention the issue it will cause for the community coach when they're removed from the position. And no, this is not the union's fault. The union is only asking that the arbitration and practice be respected. This situation was intentionally created behind the scenes without seeking your approval. They knew the issues this action would cause, and they did it anyway. You must hold them accountable.
Thank you, Mr. Calucci. Delaney?
Since I already spoke on the budget, I'm going to speak on H58C, Loving Guidance procurement. And I just wanted to share a story that I was at an event and I met a teacher. And we were talking about the discipline in the classrooms. And I asked them, I said to them, what is, what do you think about your discipline training? And I didn't use the name Loving Guidance because I wanted an unbiased opinion from this teacher. And the first thing they said was Loving Guidance is ruining our schools. Our kids don't have consequences for their actions. They're getting They're getting ice cream and candy and getting sent back to their teachers. Our teachers are getting hit, touched at. I saw a video of a teacher literally got knocked down and they were unconscious, and all the students ran out of the classroom. They were videoing it. It's obviously not working, and we're spending a hundred and, I think I saw a hundred and seventy-something thousand dollars on a program that's not working. And that's just this contract. We've seen this loving guidance over and over and over again. I don't even know how much money we've spent on them over the past years. Our kids need boundaries, they need consequences. We can't always pack them on the back and tell them it's okay that they behave poorly. That's, it's not okay. If, if my kid's teachers told me that my children were behaving poorly in their classroom, you better believe that my kids would come back the next day behaving like a new child. We need to teach our kids to respect their teachers and to not harm them, to not harm And it's a real shame that we're not listening to our teachers. We're not listening to them when they're saying that discipline is the reason why they're leaving. I went to Tractor Supply the other day, the lady at, who was checking me out, I was talking on the phone with somebody about all the school district stuff, talking about discipline. And she says to me, that's why I left. She would rather work at Tractor Supply than be in our schools. That should tell you something about this conscious discipline, loving guidance training. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Delaney. Ms. Mersky?
Good evening, Madam Chair and Board. My name is Sarah Mersky. I'm a wife, mother of two children, member of Brevard Public Schools, taxpayer, voter, constituent, college student, and I live in District Two for school board. Tonight, I'll be speaking on agenda items C-17 and F-23. Your suicide prevention resolution, which is a C-17, I 100% ho-hardily support this. This board finally recognizes the importance of mental health and how important a parent's role in recognizing mental health concerns. It's too bad members of this board called parents like me a liar when I was here, board meeting after board meeting, talking about the mental health concerns on children with your illegal COVID-19 policies, uh, what they had on the children of BPS, including the special board meeting you had a year ago to force face mask our children after we enrolled them in school, pulling a bait and switch. There were several mental health clinicians who spoke out against the detrimental mental health effects of that particular policy as well. I quoted many of the statistics tonight that were shared tonight on suicide and mental health at past uh, school board meetings. I took 30 seconds of silence out of my one minute of speaking time at that time to honor those uh, who had committed suicide and would commit suicide and um, who struggle with mental health issues. I've always said this, um, and I'm gonna say it again, mental health is just as important as physical health. Um, the other uh, agenda item I'm speaking on is F-23. Um, F-23, your student code of conduct. Lots of good things in the student code of conduct. I read the immunization requirements with great interest. What is missing from this is the 681 form provision, which is a state law. Um, whether or not it was intentional or unintentional to not have this language in this, in your student code of, of conduct, it's still discriminatory against uh, families and parents who have diverse religious faiths. I, I suggest you not pass this without adding that provision. Also, in the student code of conduct, it says, a school board will not tolerate bullying, cyberbullying, harassment, dating violence, and abuse, including cyber sexual harassment. And the board should not tolerate that. However, you have, you are tolerating materials and libraries across the district that have a step-by-step book as to teach a child how to put themselves in these dangerous situations. It was never about banning books for me, but always about safety. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Rook.
Good evening, hi. I'm gonna be speaking to C-17, suicide prevention. Good evening, my name is Connie Rook, and my three children have attended Brevard Public Schools. I'm a retired military veteran, a BPS volunteer, an avid tutor, a science fair judge, math tutor, take stock in children mentor, a robotics coach, a coding club, and a makerspace sponsor. So, yeah, I've logged a couple of hours in our schools. Couple of weeks ago, during early voting at Viero Regional, I had a conversation with an older gentleman about our public schools. We talked about teacher shortages and history curriculum, and at one point, he asked me, well, what about these news reports about boys sneaking into girls' bathrooms? And I stopped him right there. I said, sir, have you ever met a transgender person? He seemed a little surprised that I would ask, and he grunted, well, no. And I replied, well, I know several. In fact, I was a college readiness mentor to a young man at our local high school for five years. He's one of the kindest, most empathetic people I've ever known, and we've never in a million years hurt another person. Then I went on and asked him, I said, do you know anyone that's gay? He replied, well, yeah, of course. And I asked him, do you think that because someone is gay, they automatically a predator? His eyebrows shot up, and he said, no, of course not. I said, well, when you perpetuate rumors and accusations and lies like that about LGBTQ people, that's exactly what you're saying. Those lies fan the flames of hate and discrimination, and they put a target on the back of every LGBTQ student in our community. You're setting them up for harassment, bullying, violence, and even more anxiety and depression. LGPD, LGBTQ youth are four times, four times more likely to attempt suicide than their peers. And you know, they are not inherently prone to suicide risk because of their sexual orientation or gender identity, but rather placed at a higher risk because of how they are mistreated and stigmatized in society. Think about that. You are putting children at risk. It's ugly and it's cruel. Anyone that should does that should absolutely, absolutely be ashamed of themselves. And anyone that spreads those lies has no business whatsoever holding elected office. It's okay to say gay. We have to be better. We have to do better. Our schools and our kids, they deserve better. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Rook. All right, that concludes our public comment items on agenda items. We thank you for your willingness to join us this evening, and uh, anyone signed up for non-agenda will have the opportunity to speak once the board completes its work. That is going to move us into the consent agenda, Dr. Mullins.
There are 37 agenda items under this category.
Thank you, Dr. Mullins. Mr. Susan, I believe you have a request to pull one item.
I'd like to make a motion to pull um, C-27, is that what it was? I wrote it down and handed it to you.
You had number 27 on here, but I think it's-
It's F.
F-27.
Yeah, sorry.
All right, so I will entertain a motion to accept the consent agenda with the exception of item F-27. Um, wait.
I was, I was asking for a motion, and I don't think that I got a second.
You want a motion to pull it?
Yeah, I wanna, I wanna pull that item for discussion, but in order for me to do that, I think-
You don't need a motion to pull it.
Okay, perfect, perfect.
Yeah. So I'll entertain a motion to accept the consent items with the exception of the item pulled for discussion. Moved by Ms. Campbell, seconded by Ms. McDougal. Is there any discussion?
Just briefly, included in our, you're on computer.
You're good.
In, in our consent agenda is the contract for Brevard Federation Teachers. I wanted to thank Mr. Calucci, BFT team, our HR team, bargain team for the work they've done. I did want to just mention, because I have, I've been in contact with several of our 10-10 employees over the last several weeks, who are just concerned that because we went ahead and raised that minimum pay up to $15 an hour, they think that's all we're doing. I just wanted to just put that word out there one more time, that we are currently in negotiations with the 10-10 contracts over all of our support staff, um, and that will be coming hopefully very shortly. So I think, and Dr. Thede, I believe you guys go back to the table in, within a couple of weeks, Rook? On the 15th, okay. So just let them know that that's coming. We were solidifying this contract tonight, and thank you for Financial Services for the work that you guys are doing to try to get that um, out to our teachers quickly. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Campbell. Any additional discussion on consents? All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Same sign. Motion passes 5-0. Um, Mr. Susan, item F-27 you have pulled, it is your motion, sir.
Yes, I'd like to make a motion to withdraw or pull Wardell Jefferson Collins only for the head Cocoa Beach basketball coach, not the middle school portion, because that was not in arbitration, um, for the reasons that I would discuss, but during discussion, get a second.
Was there a second on that motion? All right, I have a motion and a second, open for discussion.
So-
Your motion?
Yeah, so um, this isn't an, this isn't an argument over who's a better coach, who's a worse coach, who's all that other stuff, that's sometimes where it goes. And what I've said from the beginning is that I truly believe that the burden of proof falls on the district to change the ruling from a previous arbitration before moving forward with an appointment to, um, for this. That, that's how I feel. We've stated this before, we were all up here. Um, since the other pieces were is that um, it splits the players up. Um, and so what happened is, is that last time, we, we said, hey, let's do it with expedience and everything else, and then we saw some of the emails that were coming through, that we tried to have a meeting prior to, and it ended up getting pushed to November. So when I was saying, and I met with Dr. Thede and Dr. Thede, thank you for being open and honest and sitting with us, Dr. Thede laid out, hey, this, it just wasn't working out with the lawyers and everything else. And I was like, well, I truly believe that if our burden of proof falls on the district to overturn a ruling that had already happened, that we still don't have the right to do so. So that's why I was making this motion.
Any additional discussion?
Yeah, I just wanna, um, because I seconded this motion, I just want to make it clear, I don't think our staff did anything intentionally wrong or inaccurate. Um, I'm, I definitely don't agree with those statements. I think that this is a due process that should happen, and I, I think we're following the right steps. Um, I just, my personal belief is that we shouldn't be instating somebody while we're in the middle of an arbitration to decide who is gonna eventually end up with this position. Um, so I just want to make it clear where I stand on this, has nothing to do with our staff doing something wrong by any means. Um, I just think we need to go through the process and then follow those steps.
Any additional?
So I, um, I just want to say, one of the arguments is that, uh, you know, the students will not, um, they might have to switch coaches. I know for a fact that the um, man I'm, that we're talking about at this point is, on his own time, not on school grounds, has a team together, and is coaching them and helping them with basketball, um, even while this is going on at this point. So, the students are already connected with him, and I think, I, I don't know if they're familiar with what's going on or not, but I do know that he's already volunteering his time to do this. And I do concern, to me, it's about the students at this point. They should have a coach, they should be able to get ready for basketball, and that's where I stand on this.
Can I follow?
Hold on, let me make sure there's not an additional. Ms. Campbell hasn't had an opportunity to comment. Ms. Campbell?
You know, we, it's my understanding, after talking with Dr. Thede, and I didn't get a chance to check with Paul, but he could probably confirm that even if the arbitration could have been held, um, you know, within a week or two of our last meeting, that then each side has 30 days from the time of the arbitration to get their final, um, I'm not sure what the word is.
Brief.
What is it?
Brief.
Briefs in, and then the arbitrator has another 30 days, um, generally, before they have to issue an opinion. So at that point, am I saying that-
Yeah, roughly.
Accurate, roughly. So at that point, even if we could have had the hearing within two weeks of our last meeting, we're talking about not being able to have a final decision potentially until after basketball, right, after basketball season, um, is well underway, as far as the tryouts and all that kind of stuff. So, and, 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 you know, that was, that was if we had it in August. Um, so at this point, it really wouldn't have mattered if it was before the November date, we weren't gonna have a decision in a timely manner. And so, um, you know, and, you know, we have no idea of knowing what the arbitrator will decide, um, but I know we have past precedent, um, where their, and their arbitrations have happened, and the change that was, that the arbitrator had said, hey, make this change, didn't happen until the following season, the following school year, you know, pay the person as if they're doing it, but, you know, you know, said, no, no idea of knowing how this one would turn out, but it's not an automatic that, um, that an arbitrator would, would require us to change uh, coaches in the middle of a season. So.
Mr. Susan?
Yeah, um, Ms. McDougal, I would, I would caution to say that he's coaching them now, sometimes they'll quick pick up stuff, because it's illegal for a coach to grab a team prior to season starting, and the season doesn't start until near the end of October. So if he's out there coaching with them as a team, it's, it's, I know he's not doing that. I'm just saying, he might be connecting with them, but just, um, I wouldn't throw that out there too fast. The uh, um, and I agree with you. Like, I've seen, listen, this has played out 100 times, where the community coach connects with the kids. He comes up with them, like the rec leagues, many of them come up with the rec leagues through the system, and they're able to connect with them there. There's great people that are in the community. That's not what's being argued here. What's being argued here is, is the fact that the burden of proof, I feel, falls on the district. You could have the, one of the greatest coaches ever, but the fact is, is that I truly believe that if you have two prior precedences that say that this is the way things are, and we're going in to do it right now, that we should, as a district, have the um, court cases and stuff like that taken care of prior to doing that. I do want to say that we can talk about the timing being that way, but there's, there has been the opportunity to meet. There also, it's not always going to take. If, if an arbitrator knew that the decision that he was making was based on the fact that kids would or would not have a coach at the time, then he would obviously be one that would hurry up that arbitration and not wait till the last day. So I appreciate, Ms. Campbell, your um, schedule of timing, saying the longest times to push it back, but I would argue that we truly could have, as a district, met, got it done, pushed it to the arbitrator, arbitrator could have come back prior to season. And that's why I hang my hat on. Thank you.
Any additional discussion? Yeah. Ms. Campbell?
Yeah, I just want to say, so I seconded this motion because I think it was valid to have a discussion about it, because we've discussed it in the past, but I think it made sense. Um, I've said publicly, I, I think we should be waiting for this arbitration, um, but I also don't believe in leaving these kids without a coach, because we know, we know the timeline, right? The last time we had this conversation, we were hoping for this timeline to get a little bit faster and to get done. Um, so, you know, I know that the school district will have to honor whatever the results of that arbitration are. Um, I just wanted publicly to say for a second time, my beliefs of it, I do believe we should have waited, but I'm not gonna leave these kids without a coach either. Um, and so I hope that it doesn't get delayed anymore and gets done as soon as possible. Um, and whatever the results are, I mean, we have to abide by them, so.
I just say one last thing.
Hold on, anyone else want to comment a second time before I allow Mr. Susan a third time? Mr. Susan?
I just want to say thank you to Ms. Jenkins for seconding it, that's all.
Anything else? No, I'm, I'm-
To clarify, before you call for the vote, Ms. Belfort, exactly, the motion was to approve it minus the coach. It has been seconded. So if we vote yes at this time, are we voting for Mr. Susan's motion? Or are we voting to approve the-
You're voting.
You're voting, you're voting for the motion that was made, which is to pull the community coach off the uh-
Okay. I just wanted to clarify before we take votes, so we all know what we're voting, voting for.
We ready for the questions?
Yep.
All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Same sign. Aye. Motion fails one to four, so I'll entertain a motion, well, I'll, I'll entertain a motion. I would suggest that that motion should probably be to approve item F twenty-seven as presented, but I will leave that up to your.
Move to approve. There you go.
Okay. So we have a motion on the floor to approve item F twenty-seven as presented, and a second on that motion. Is there any additional discussion needed? All right, all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Same sign?
Aye.
Motion passes four to one. Okay.
Ms. Belford, if I may, I wanted to wait until the board was done with that vote, just to make some additional comments that I feel necessary to make in response to my staff. First, it was suggested at the prior board meeting that the process to put the recommendation on the board meeting was not regular practice, but Dr. Thede, you know, clarified that with the board, and that is, that was the consistent practice of the board for that type of position. So I just wanted, since it was publicly presented that way previously, I wanted to recognize my staff had done that appropriately at the last board meeting. It doesn't preclude the board from taking the action they did at the last board meeting, having discussion. But I did want to correct record that it was done correctly and consistently, consistently with past, past practice. The second thing is, I want to provide some clarification to the suggestions of delay. I don't think it is appropriate to, for anyone to interpret delay being on behalf of my staff related to this incident. My staff has been ready to go to arbitration for weeks. It is not dependent on my staff. It is ultimately dependent on the availability of three, at least, three other independent parties. So it's really five parties involved in this situation. That's the legal counsel for the school district. That's the legal counsel for the, for Brevard Federation of Teachers. It's the arbitrator. Then it's also BFT's availability, and then finally, Brevard Public Schools. That's a complex suggestion of schedules to bring together where at least three of those entities have very full-time jobs unrelated to Brevard Public Schools or school districts. We have to fit into their schedule of availability. And I would suggest that if there has been any delay, it's the result of those outside entities not being able to coordinate their schedules throughout the process. So I just wanted to provide that correction. My, my staff has been prepared and ready to present their positions for arbitration for some time now. The challenge has come in bringing five different entities together for the calendar, and we were, after the last board meeting, and the board's charged to do everything that we could to expedite that. But we went back to them. I think Mr. Gibbs facilitated that once again, and November was the best date that could be brought forward. So I just want to demonstrate my staff's efforts and their consistent practice. Thank you.
I'd like to follow Dr. Mullins. So I think where the consistency, and what we were talking about with them putting out on the, on the agenda, Dr. Mullins, was the fact that there had never been a basketball coach that had been put on the agenda in the last five years during that time. And that's where the consistency was talked about. When Dr., when Dr. Thede and I were talking, what she was saying is, is that when they receive these, that it behooves them to put them into the system immediately after that. So it was, that it was not the fact, when I was speaking before, it was about how never in the history of our school district had we already done and approved somebody. So when I was saying that it was inconsistent with that, it was inconsistent with that. What Dr. Thede came back and said to me was, is that, you know what, the inconsistency, it was not what it is. It's sitting there that when we receive the recommendation from, and we have their paperwork ready, we have to get it in because that's what best practice is. And that's when sometimes you see some of them at different times. But I just wanted to clear that piece up. The second piece is, is that the delay in availability, in many law firms, if there's a, if there's a problem with timing, sometimes they'll have one of the other associates or the other lawyers filling in and helping out in different aspects so that they can get there. I truly believe that this was an issue that we needed to agenda, that we needed to come forward with and get done prior to the time. And I think that if we would have truly expressed that to the law firms and made them work as hard as they can to get there, I think we could have gotten there. So just want to reiterate.
Any additional? Okay. Dr. Mullins?
No.
Okay. Will you please let us know about items under the action portion of today's agenda?
There is, next, whoop, sorry. I went ahead of myself. The first item is H fifty-eight, Department School Initiated Agreements.
What is this, is the board?
Second.
Moved by Ms. McDougal, seconded by Ms. Campbell. Is there any discussion?
Yes.
Ms. Campbell?
Sorry, I know it's been a long night, but I'd ask Ms. Moore if she wouldn't mind answering a couple of questions on this item in, under the Health Services contract, which is not necessarily a monetary contract, but it's our agreement with the Brevard County Health Department. It incorporates some of the things that we're doing as far as the, not questionnaire, what's the word I'm looking for, the form that the parents are having to fill out. Health consent. Thank you, the health consent form. And because there continues to be a lot of confusion around what that is, I asked Ms. Moore if she wouldn't mind just kind of walking through that form. I mean, obviously, everybody knows what a band-aid is and taking the temperature or whatever, but there's a couple of terms on that form that have been, have caused some confusion and some angst in the community, and I understand why because, you know, people look at the news across the country over the last couple of years and think of maybe certain things are going to happen. So would you mind just, first of all, just kind of walking us through those, besides the obvious ones, what, what some of those terms mean? Because I know, for me, the goal is that we get those forms in because if a parent hasn't signed the form to give any kind of direction, then the school has no choice but just put a column on those. And I won't go into all the legislative, you know, because that's been explained earlier, but can you just kind of walk us through mainly what those terms mean on the form? Yeah, I can. First, I do want to take a minute to introduce Chris Reed again. Award-winning Chris Reed. Award-winning Chris Reed. You know, whenever we work on any of these documents, it's just a balancing game of making sure that we're meeting statute language, that we're working with our core partners, which is Department of Health, and working within our policies. So it, it's really a puzzle of making sure that we fit all the pieces together and that we're accurately representing what is expected by our, our DOE and our legislators to do in our, in our school district. So the consent form, we wanted to make sure it was related to the other required documents that we have, which is why what you see in front of you is the school health plan. That school health plan is required. I think it's required to be revised every two years, but we also pull it and amend it as needed, and it comes before you guys to see it again. So when we put together consent form, there wasn't a whole lot of guidance from the Department of Education. In fact, they weren't allowed to give us guidance. And there wasn't a whole lot of guidance from the Department of Health because, in fact, they weren't allowed to give us guidance. So we decided that our best option was to make sure that we had a guiding document that we could refer parents to, and that's what you guys are seeing before you tonight. So I know nursing assessments, we've gotten a couple of questions on that. The definition of what a nursing assessment is, is part of this document. The first thing I should let you know is that a nursing assessment has to be done by an RN. Most of the people in our schools are health techs. We do have some LPNs, but only RNs are, by DOH requirement, allowed to do a nursing assessment. And that is designated healthcare staff conduct reviews of students' medical status and develop a health condition list at the beginning of the school every year. Designated RNs will assess students with actual potential or suspected health problems and develop appropriate nursing care plans for identified students. So as we get information in from parents, if they need to review and revise a healthcare plan, that's what our RNs do. The school principal reviews and signs in collaboration with the nursing supervisor any chronic health forms being considered for approval. So students who have a chronic health condition, that is going to necessitate them to have more absences than a typical child without a chronic health condition, but not necessarily more doctor or hospital visits, there's a process by which they can submit a chronic health form. Our RN reviews those to make sure that everything is medically legit. And then our principals also sign off so that those students aren't held to the same attendance standard. Again, it's all in this plan. Health appraisals, we've gotten some questions about what health appraisals are. I'm going to skip down because I'm going to go in order of the document. Health counseling is on there. We've gotten some questions about health counseling. Provide health teaching and health advice as appropriate. The school health staff will provide health teaching, health advice as required. Referrals will be made to the RN supervisor as needed for additional assessments, as needed, of both students and to our parents or guardians. Also, if deemed necessary, the LEA, that's the Local Education Agency, will refer a student to appropriate counsel, social worker staff. Parents consent for this service in writing will be done annually. We've added that throughout this. That's part of a couple of other pieces of legislation that we had to pull in. Before you go off of that one, that health counseling, that would be maybe for more of those chronic, typically for more of those chronic condition type things like diabetes and. It very well could be. I mean, I don't want to limit it and put, you know. Right. But most often, it's for students who have chronic conditions or medical conditions that, diabetes is a good one. Our little ones have a difficult time regulating that. They have a difficult time understanding what they're allowed to eat. They have a difficult time understanding what they eat and how it impacts them. And so we often have ongoing conversation as kids with type one diabetes get older. The other one, I do want to talk about health appraisals because we've gotten a couple of questions on that. Chris, what page is that on? Item two does not help me.
Page six.
Page six. I went right past it. Sorry, guys.
Hidden down at the bottom.
It is. Thank you. Thank you for giving me that grace. I appreciate it. Health appraisal number two, determine the health status of a student. The school will request parent guardians to provide new or updated medical information to be listed on each, in each student's file. We do that every year. This information is to be shared with need-to-know personnel as necessary to provide medical care to the student. This could include teachers, bus drivers, whoever has a visual or a time with a child that has a health condition that needs to be monitored. Now, school records are reviewed for student health needs. Daily health needs of students are assessed during clinic visits. Parents will consent to this service in writing annually. I think those are the big ones that we keep getting questions on. With that one, just to help clarify, with that one, would be something, for example, if, for a student with a severe allergy that has to carry an EpiPen or whatever, that would be something that, so that when you talk about need-to-know personnel, then that, that student's teacher may, if it's, let's say, a peanut allergy, needs to be aware. And so that's part of the whole plan of communication. Yes. Yes, and, I mean, there's other steps that go along with that, but yes. Right.
Seizures.
Right, yeah, because, I mean, every time you read the incident report, there's a student somewhere at some school in the district that had a seizure, and that's, that's an ongoing thing that our clinic. Thank you for going through those. Did you have any other ones? I think everything else is pretty self-explanatory. Yeah, those are the big three. This went to Shaq, which is our school health advisory council yesterday. They, you know, they took a look at it. We have some partners from outside agencies, as well as the Department of Health, as well as, you know, Department of Education, and some parents that sit on that committee. Cheryl McDougal is our, our board representative on that committee. They had a couple of little questions, but, you know, we, we can't fit a twenty-page or so document into one sheet. So we do want to keep referring people back to the school health services plan. And so. Well, I think one of the things that happens, you know, like I said, my opinion is that sometimes it's just what people have heard in the news, and they're afraid that what that might, what that means is something that's not what it means. And so I'm glad we have this document that really more spells out what it is, who's responsible for it, who you can ask. And the other thing I'm, I also consider is that often we, we think about terms, things in terms of our own family, our own experience. And I know that we have schools, for example, where Ms. Reed used to be the principal, it's a community partnership school, and the services that we are not providing through the school, but we are helping our students and families connect to in the community, may not be, you know, I, if my kids are having health issues, no big deal, we go down to our doctor, but some of our families really struggle. And so we have to think outside the box. I encourage people to think outside the box and realize that sometimes our schools, through our social workers, through our community partners, especially in a school like Endeavor that is a community partnership school, we're helping students connect with vital, just checkups. And, you know, our, our health Head Start program, every time they come to us, they talk about the, the hygienist and the dental screenings that is required by their programs, but that those students from those families don't always have those connections with that other families might. And so, but, like I said early, you know, at the beginning, the important thing for me is making sure that people get the form in. And if they're concerned about some of these services because they're still suspicious of whatever it might be, by all means, don't check those boxes, but we need to get them in. And I know you had, you had shared with me a little bit of why, why we weren't able to do it at the registration time because some of it was the fuzziness around what the State Department of Health and Department of Education wanted us to have on that. But moving forward, are we going to be able to incorporate this form in our annual registration form so that we can get a better return from our parents on this document? Yeah, this is, this is absolutely going into registration next year unless there's some new legislation. Because, you know, as, as some people know, most of the legislation that gets passed, it gets, you know, we see it. We see it going through committee, and then it'll have an effective July first. But it may be November, December, January before we get any kind of guidance on it. So pending any new legislation, this is going to be part of our registration packet, and we might, you know, if it was up to me, it'd be part of our registration packet and update it after. But it is, we, we just sent a memo out, or memo's going out on Monday for how our schools are going to input all of this into focus. So we have a electronic record of everything. Right now, it's paperwork. And, and then we'll be able to really see, you know, what we're missing, what we have, and start, you know, reaching out to parents to better support them, make sure they got the right paperwork, and make sure that we get it in. Right. When, when we get all that in, and I know it will be a very quick process, even when it's available, would you give us, the board, an update as far as how many, percentage-wise, of our students have that form returned, and how many of them don't? And I know our schools were going to be, continuing to communicate. I have gotten it from both of my children's schools, reminders, you know, fill out your form. We turned ours in. Yeah, thank you. But that's really important. So in the meantime, if parents are still paying attention to the board meeting at this point, and they get a call from the school, it's, might be because they didn't turn that form in. Yeah, so. Thank you for all of that. I appreciate you, Ms. Moore.
Just one quick question for you, Ms. Moore, for our families. Obviously, this document is available on this agenda, but where else can they locate that document to read it? Do we know where it is?
The, the health, this, the school health services plan?
Yeah.
Last year's is posted on the website. It is, it is in a bizarre location. It is a function of our Food Services group. So if you go to department and departments on our website, you're going to go to Food Services, and there's going to be a left-hand column, and in the left-hand column, it's going to say, School Health Services Plan. This one will be signed and sent up to the, does it go to the DOH, Chris? That's what I thought. It goes to the DOH, and then we will, as soon as everything is signed, we'll upload this one to the Food Services site.
Thank you. Mr. Susan?
That's one that you avoided because everybody else puts all of those kind of things into your bucket, right? Athletics and everything else, and that one's in Food Services, but you're still Services.
Still responsible for her.
We're still doing it, but it shows up on their stuff.
Oh, is it?
And then, anyways, that was just kind of a thing. But want to walk through the immunization situation. When somebody comes in to register, they say, do you have your immunization card, right? And if they don't have it, do we tell them, you need to have these immunizations, or you can have, you can get the, I forget what it's called, right?
Yeah, yeah. So, yes, and in the code of conduct, it does talk a little bit about what our policy states, and it's, you know, based on parent, parents consent in a note about their religious beliefs. We can accept a doctor note about medical conditions. But yes, it will say what our immunization policy is, what the expectations are, and then if a parent has a.
Do they know that when they come in, that they can make those two choices, is what I was saying?
It's in our student code of conduct, and it's in our policy.
So if they walk up and get registered and they're, and hey, you have to have your immunizations, where's your immunizations? We say what?
Well, I can't say what eighty-four different clerks at eighty-four different schools might say, but I can say it's in our code of student conduct and it's in our policy. And when those questions come to us, we respond with, you can certainly write a letter and let us know that it's against your religious beliefs for immunization, or you can bring in a doctor's note saying you have a medical reason not to move forward with immunization.
Okay. And then.
By the way, the immunization form is not ours. The immunization form is the Department of Health. We have no authority to change or, or edit that.
Right. And in the, in the event that somebody does not want to immuniza, do immunizations for certain things, if there is an outbreak of those certain things, then they tell the individuals who don't have those immunizations, there's like a rule process that they have to say and all this.
So it depends on different, yes, and, different diseases have different definitions of outbreak.
Sure.
So it's going to depend on what the illness is and what they, what the Health Department determines as a cluster or an outbreak. And then what they'll do is they will decide how big a circle needs to be around.
Sure.
So I'll give you a, for example, if five students get chickenpox in a class, that would absolutely be an outbreak. The Department of Health would look at the immunization records of that class. They would call us, and they would say, these students are not immunized by, for chickenpox, and they need to go home for a very specific period of time. And that is also different by every illness. So, but they wouldn't say every child in this school needs to go home because they're not immunized for chickenpox.
Yeah, I was just, I was just walking through it. We get a lot of questions about the immunizations and stuff like that. So I just wanted to make it sure it was here. Thank you. That's it.
Sure. Yeah, you bet.
Any additional discussion on this item? All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Any opposed, same sign. Motion passes five zero. All right, Dr. Mullins.
Next is item H59, procurement solicitations.
What other wishes the board?
Move to approve.
Moved by Mr. Susan, seconded by Ms. McDougal. Is there any discussion on this item? All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign. Motion passes five zero. We will now move on to the information agenda, which includes items for board review and may be brought back for action at a subsequent meeting. However, no action will be taken on these items today. Dr. Mullins.
There is one item under the information category.
Does any board member wish to discuss the information item on tonight's agenda? All right, we are now at board member reports. Ms. Campbell requested discussion of our legislative platform issues. And I sent all of the board members an email. The FSBA has a deadline of, I believe, the 16th to submit legislative platform requests. So Ms. Campbell wanted to have at least some discussion about, are there some things that we can submit to FSBA? I know there's, you know, we go through a normal legislative process, but it's not going to align with this timeline.
Right, and I just, you know, there's, there's no requirement that we send anything in. But if we are going to send something in, this is our only chance to have that conversation and then to submit it. Obviously, we're not ready to have our, yes, our, our board legislative documents prepared yet. But I didn't know if there was something that we had submitted before that we were interested in submitting again. We, on our personal agenda, we, you know, a lot of movement was made. Obviously, we got the appropriation for the fire thing and fire program. But that's, that's not something we would have submitted to FSBA. Honestly, off the top of my head, I can't remember exactly what was submitted last year.
Pre-K.
To FSBA, just the pre-K item. But I didn't know if there was interest in submitting any, either one of these, and seeking particularly the first two ones that we talked about last year, the pre-K teachers, having them take a look at that. Or the definition of classroom teacher to include all instructional personnel, or at least to take a look at that again because it continues to come up and cause problems, so.
Yeah, you know, the other, the other thing that, and I, I mentioned it when Mr. Ford was here with us earlier, but I really think that we have to push them on the per-student station cost.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah. I wonder though, is that, because he, when you shared, if I remember what he would share with us, me the other day, is that the legislature has directed the DOE to make that changes happen. I mean, I guess legislatively, they could say, "Hey, DOE, now's the time." So.
Well, they were supposed to have done it by 2020.
Right.
And they, they have not done that yet. And I, I feel like, you know, as we continue to see growth.
And we're not the only district that would affect, so maybe that would be.
Yeah, it's going to come more and more of an issue in that area.
Orange County just built like 5K through 8s. They're squeezed. I'm sure all of the urban districts are exploding. You know what I mean? Like, you're right. I mean, they should have, they were directed to do it in two years ago, inflation costs, everything else.
Yeah, and realistically, it probably needs to be done on an annual basis. You know, at least take a look at how that's impacted because that, the, you know, without the cost per student station issue, we would have been very close to not having to finance for the middle school.
Right.
So I, that, that would be my recommendation and I would certainly support, you know, I don't know that they're going to get anywhere, but I would support submitting the other two as well.
I think, I think it, you know, the construction industry literally has pretty tight indexes that they can follow. It's not a, you know, hey, we're, this is the inflation today or whatever. I mean, it's pretty strict. And the, and the fact that they haven't come back in two years and done it, and we're getting pinched on it right now. Like, we're going to literally have to take out loan and pay interest because they didn't do that. That, there's an issue with that. You know what I mean? There's a real issue with that. So I agree with you on that. And when you're done, I had one that I would, thought I'd throw in there too.
I'm done.
Well, I, so, well, third years in there, I was just going to recommend that we, I was going to ask Ms. Belker, would you mind writing up something that was, that encapsulates our conversation about the cost per student station issue? And submitting, because we probably just need to have one person submit our, I'm volunteering you. Do you mind doing that?
She writes everything.
I know. You are the wordsmith of the group. Did you have another one that you wanted to add to our?
I did, I did. I think both of what you were saying also was really good too. I think when you were talking about the pre-K and the other piece, it just keeps, I mean, we keep getting hit with it and it's just not fair. It's not fair to Dr. Mullins, it's not fair to staff. I agree with you on that. The other thing that I was going to say is I've been getting a lot of positive with the legislators on the idea of a review commission to review the regulation of the DOE on the school districts over the last like 15 years, maybe possibly reduce some of what we're having to deal with, with paperwork and everything else, right? They, they actually thought it was a good idea because they're deregulating or they're making it smaller, right? Really and truly for us, it's, there are so many things that I feel like we could streamline and do better that would take time less for our teachers and everybody else. So I truly believe, I don't know how I could articulate that, but there's some want on that piece. And I'll be with them anyway, so I can kind of try to wordsmith it and put it in there at the last minute. But that's where I was thinking because there's, I'm just tired of, like, literally everybody says, you know, "It was great in 1950, our education was great in 1950." And I'm like, "Yeah, but we actually were able to teach 180 days." You know what I mean? Now we have all these regulations. We're teaching like, like 70 days when it's all said and done. And that ain't enough. So, that's all.
So kind of like a, similar to the federal paperwork reduction act, you know, we're just asking them.
Yep. And, and with the premise that the teachers in the classroom need more instructional time and it's being eaten up by all of the good idea fairies regulation, quite frankly, over the last 10 years. They come up with these new ideas and then all of a sudden the teacher work, more paperwork, more regulation, more of this. And all of a sudden, we're literally have like half of the days to teach that aren't testing, that aren't running out and doing fire drills, that aren't doing the, you know, all of those things. So, that's all.
Ms. Han, I see that you poked your head in the door. Were you, were you poking your head in in response to what our discussion was? Or did you just happen to come in the door at that time? Okay. Did you have concern about my recommendation to address cost per student station analysis? Okay, perfect.
I would just like to add, I think it's really critical that FSBA get in the fight when it comes to accommodating the salaries of our staff and our teachers and to stop ignoring the fact that legislatively we are, again, handcuffed when it comes to how we can give raises to our staff. It's insane that they are dictating the percentages of what we can give to what staff members when every single district, quite frankly, is different, especially, you know, like we talked today. We've got 22 districts that have millages passed. Their salaries are very different than ours. Their discrepancies between certain staff members are very different than ours. And to give us an insane calculation that quite frankly is contradictory to the TSIA calculation that they tell us to give is not only confusing, it appears to be intentional to continuously drive wage compression and keep salaries down for our staff. So I think FSBA would, I just think it's their, I think it's their obligation. I think we've been silent on it, so.
All right, I'm sitting at.
If I can add just a couple considerations. I know FSBA and FADS collaborate, you know, across organizations, associations. Just some conversations that we're having, as I said, on the board for FADS. One is to begin discussions or proposal to move TSIA allocation into the FEFP as a separate categorical. It is more subject to potential defunding or underfunding moving forward. And that is a perpetual recurring cost to districts and to provide security for that funding, interest in having the DOE move it into the FEFP. So it's not likely to be reduced in funding like we saw recently with the class size amendment allocation. Second is reconsideration of the calendar year sit out for an individual who retires does drop and can come back into the system. The reason, my understanding, just to provide some background, my understanding is, is that became an issue based on IRS regulations, having to sit out for a year. That has been, that question has been called and answered and when the state wanted to reduce it down back to the 30 days for emergency responders. And so it was approved for emergency, which opens the door now for other classifications of employees that take advantage of or utilize Florida retirement system. But that doesn't mean it's going to happen automatically. We've got to be a strong voice in saying we want to move all employment classes back to a 30-day sit out, which would allow us to then give opportunities for continued employment for teachers, administrators, and so on. One of the concerns was is that individuals could get reinvested in the retirement system. I would propose as a concession that employees aren't interested because the, the term of reinvestment is now eight years. It used to be six. To expect an individual who has done 30 years, maybe plus five of drop or seven, and then to do another full eight to get vested is probably, that's a, that's an extreme case. But to keep them in the system for two more years or three more years certainly is a proposition I think we should lobby to the, to the state for.
So, um... Going to add on that topic. I know the supervisor elections, I think I shared this a few years ago, was also interested in that. So there's other forces because I know they, they look at retirees frequently for positions like poll workers. And I know I've heard Roy Scott in the past talk about if they, if it wasn't a year, she would have an easier time finding those poll workers from recent retirees as well.
Mm-hmm, absolutely. So I, I will craft some verbiage around this and then send it to you all. And Dr. Mullins, if you have anything that FADS has already put together on those two issues, if you wouldn't mind forwarding it to me? And then I'll send it out to you all just in case you have any feedback on it. Mr. Susan, you are now our appointee, so you're going to have to be able to speak intelligently to those issues at the meeting.
Absolutely.
Okay.
I've got a board of directors meeting in October. I'm going to be over there for a couple of days unveiling a couple of other things too, so it'll be good.
Okay.
Yep, absolutely. I'll be on there.
All right, anything else on legislative platform issues? Any other items on board discussion?
I have something I want to talk about.
Okay.
Yeah. So... As elected officials, we operate under Florida sunshine law. We are subject to public records requests. We're no strangers to them. And I want to bring this up to my fellow board members and to people who are listening. I'm going to read a statement here from our sunshine manual. And I'm going to kind of jump around just because there's a lot of numbers in here and they're not going to make any sense to anybody. So the definition of a public record specifically includes a record made or received in connection with official business. Any connection with official business is public record, regardless of physical form, characteristics, or means of transmission. I'm going to skip a lot here because there's a lot of references to chapters and yada, yada, yada. That's not going to make any sense if I'm just saying it verbally to you. The determining factor is the nature of the record and not whether or not the record is located in a private or government computer or communications device. And so the reason I read that, I'm going to be as broad as possible here. I submitted a public records request myself to this district and the response I got to something that I requested specifically on a personal device was that it doesn't need to be responded to because it was on a personal device. And I've received plenty of public records asking for things on my public, my personal device, if it exists. I know we had a couple of lawsuits come up where we've had to go through our personal devices, if anything exists, and submit that as well. And so I just want to bring that up to my fellow board members. That, that is a grave concern of mine. It opens the district up to potential legal issues if we are not fulfilling those public records requests. And I think that the public has an obligation to hear that that is a response. And it concerns me. It concerns me with transparency. It concerns me with accountability. Because essentially what that means is that not only us as elected officials, but anyone who's working in the school system is also subject to public records requests. That if we do those things on our personal device, we don't have to submit them. And I don't agree with that. And I don't think that the law says that either. And I just wanted to make you all aware of that. And my concern, my concern is it's going to open up some legal issues.
Thank you, Ms. Jenkins. Any additional board discussions?
Paul, do you wish to clarify anything here? Are you okay? Because the public records request was for a record that doesn't exist. And I put plenty of case law, just like other people who said this to her previously also. And now I sent that to you for review, right?
Yes.
Okay. And so the request was not said that, that wasn't that it's on a personal device and it doesn't happen. It's on because the public record doesn't exist, period. So is that the nature of what was sent to you?
I can't remember verbatim what it was. It was a fairly long email. There was a, if they don't hold it in public business, like on a personal device, like if it's not being held by the entity, then it wouldn't exist by the entity for a public records request.
If it doesn't exist on, on the device, if it doesn't exist in the public, it doesn't exist. All cannot be a public record. So that's what those court cases and the defining support and everything was. That's all. So... That's been clarified before too.
I'm just, I, I wasn't going to get specific, but now I'm going to. The response that I received was not that it doesn't exist.
No.
And, uh, that's a concern to me. And I, and listen, I did a request of business phone and there were no results. Yet public statements were made that these communications had happened. And I have people in this room who say that these communications happen on the private phones. There's people who have under oath made that statement. So it's concerning to me. So, Mr. Gibbs, I, I would love for you to clarify for me if the response I got was that they didn't exist at all. Because that's not what happened. And I wasn't going to get specific there, but for you to say that, I'm going to double down. That is not the response I received.
I don't know what public records actually sent to you. I know the email correspondence that was going back and forth with my office. And there was a case law citing that defined the record under 119. Let me see if I can find where the statement is. It was in regard to school district-owned devices, call logs on school officials' personal mobile phones would not become public record unless the log itself was prepared in connection with official agency business and intended perpetuate, communicate, or formalize knowledge of some type based on a 1980 Florida Supreme Court case, which further defined the term record as used under 119 Florida statutes to mean any material prepared in connection with official agency business, which is intended to perpetuate, communicate, or formalize knowledge of some type. And it went on to say they were not aware of a government official's personal phone being a public record as it's not held by the public. They're not public records unless public agency or public employee makes use of the logs themselves based on Nissan versus Pierce County in Washington from 2015.
Yep.
So I'm going to go ahead and read the email I received. "Good afternoon, Ms. Jenkins. Mr. Susan has provided a response to your phone log request citing case law that states personal cellphone records do not qualify as public records." That is not saying that they don't exist. That is saying that they are not to be, they are not subject to public records law. And so...
I submitted that to Paul for review prior to, he was supposed to contact your public records department to tell them to hold until he's reviewed it. So the fact that they jumped the gun and did that, whatever. I can't speak for the public records.
Well, it's not jumping the gun when I submit the request almost a month ago.
No, no.
Listen, I have a right to say that, not only as a fellow elected official who's been subject to the same public records request, I have the right to say that as a constituent myself. I think it is subverting public records law. And I think that as a board, we need to be concerned because there could be legal ramifications for it.
Ms. Jenkins, I'd just like to review the fact that our own attorney just cited case law specific to your request. We just went ahead and found out publicly that I returned the information to Mr. Gibbs so that he could review it, send it over to the public records group. They must have sent an email to you ahead of time. That was not part of the plan. So what you're... So what you're saying and what you're doing is outside the scope of what our legal counsel is in the process of doing, so I would refer him you to him and find out what it is, because that's the proper process for our school board members to take care of.
Absolutely. And Mr. Gibbs, have I met with you about this?
Yes.
Yes. And Mr. Gibbs, do you believe that this case law either supports or goes against this being a public record? Do you believe that it says either way?
I don't think it's super clear. I think there's a lack of clarity in the email actually acknowledging there's no direct on point case law finding whether or not personal records would be public record on a phone log and for a personal device.
Okay, thank you. So I have a right to still be concerned that it is circumventing public records law. Thank you.
Are we good? Ben. Dr. Mullins, do you have anything more to add?
If I may, I have three quick updates for the board. I think you'll appreciate being made aware of. One, I want to just probably provided the board an update on student enrollment after our three day count process. Enrollment was looking favorable then. It is looking even more favorable now. Our enrollment is actually over projection in our elementary and secondary schools by over four hundred and sixty students, and we continue to grow historically into the October FTE. So I would I would let the board know that our projections for this year were already ambitious, and we determined those back in January, February of last school year. And not only have we met those projections, we've exceeded them considerably across our traditional elementary elementary and secondary schools. So very positive, encouraging news there. Second, just want to do a continuous plug for our mentoring program framework. I have mentioned it several times in public presentations. It is alive and available on our website. We can monitor like access to that website, and we've had considerable numbers of folks at least visit the website and appear to be going through the training process. Our fingerprinting and background check cost is still zero for individuals to meet that first benchmark requirement for becoming a mentor, and I would just implore our board, and I know you do already, but our community to go through the mentoring program if you're available and you would love to mentor some of our students. Our principals are ready and receptive to getting you plugged into our schools across the district. And finally, I want to put a big plug out for our parent first ever Parent Academy, which will be launched end of September or first week in October. We're finalizing dates and locations. The first topic is going to be in the student behavior arena, how parents and school can come together and partnering to improve student behavior. It's about a ninety minute session. What's exciting is we're really leveraging a lot of technology and kind of a new of new venue. We are simulcasting the training from the boardroom to five satellite locations across the district where there will be an in-person opportunity in our schools. Our staff there will work with the families at that site where the instruction will be delivered simulcast, and then they'll have the hands-on activities with staff in the schools. So we have capacity at the Parent Academy for hundreds of families to participate at the same time. Of course, it'll also be recorded, and parents can utilize it if they're not available to participate in real time to access that information, as well as all the resources that we'll be providing our parents along the way. So that's the first of several Parent Academy engagement opportunities that will be continuing across the school year. So very excited about that. We'll be doing a big launch of the information, the specifics, locations, the time, how to access the simulcast and/or the podcast afterwards. So just got to keep speaking that out there and get the word out that we have that great opportunity. Big thanks to Ms. Moore, her team that is working on the content, and Mr. Brune and his team are working on the logistics of technology and all of that fun stuff. So thank you to my team for their great work. Thank you, Ms. Belfer.
Can I just I just want to make one quick comment, and I know this is not board member, and it's not specific to what you shared, Dr. Mullins, but I just feel like it's necessary to make the comment. So, you know, we we talked earlier in the meeting about the fact that we have this is the first time that we've come together since the school year started and all of the great work that went to making sure that we started off strong, that our students are being served, and the great work of our bus drivers, and, you know, all of the people who have poured in making this a successful start to the year, albeit with challenges. I just have to point out, and I know that we internally and as board members have had this conversation, and we saw the exact same thing last year from this team who serves our district, and that is not only are they maintaining, right, keeping us afloat and getting our school year started, but they are expanding and working on parent academies and doing the work that, you know, we're doing in elementary and secondary to continue to support students to success and doing all of focus onboarding and the new substitute app and the I mean, it they just don't rest.
It's mind boggling.
It is absolutely mind boggling. And so. Day. Yeah. Couldn't let that go. Okay. All right.
Do you have any?
We have two public speakers on non-abor borne, non-agenda items. We'll now hear the remaining speakers who signed up to comment on non-agenda items. Each speaker is limited to three minutes. We have a clock in front of me to help you keep track of your time. When your time is over, you'll be asked to stop and allow the next speaker his or her turn. We hear from the speakers in the order in which they're signed up. Only two of them, so Ms. Delaney and then Ms. Mersky. As stated earlier, reasonable decorum is expected at all times, and your statement should be directed to the board chair. Should audience participation interfere with speakers being heard or hearing me, I'll be forced to clear the room. I don't think we have any audience left other than our two speakers, so it shouldn't be a problem. Good night.
And the rooks are leaving.
And the rooks are leaving, so there you go.
What about Ms. Mullins?
Mrs. Mullins, do you anticipate being, you know, disruptive or okay. All right, so we will start with Ms. Delaney. When you're ready, ma'am.
So there is I'm going to read something that I saw today in a mom swap group, and I will not say the child's name, but it's written in this. And again, these are not my words. This is not something I typically do, but here it goes. If your son named blank is in eighth grade and goes to Space Coast Junior Senior High, and he comes home with a bloody nose, just know it was my daughter my seventh grade daughter that did it. It has been he has been bullying her since the second week of school. He has told teachers, deans, and multiple other adults. Nothing has been done. I have called and spoke to the deans and multiple other adults. Nothing has been done. She came home yesterday with marks from where he stabbed her and scratched her with a pen. That was the last straw. I told her that if he touches her or touches her with anything, she has my full permission to defend herself and do what she feels necessary to make him stop. If the adults at the school did what needs to be done, we wouldn't be in this situation. I have been talking about this for two years now. At every almost every meeting, I've been talking about this. I don't care if a student is any kind of demographic, any kind of sexual orientation, any kind of anything. I want our kids safe in school. I don't care what their label is. It doesn't matter. I want our kids to be highly educated, and I want our kids to be safe. And, you know, we talk about suicide prevention. How about how about our kids being bullied relentlessly, and none of the adults are doing anything about it? And if if an adult does come out about it, like a friend of mine, she gets sued by the We need to have an honest conversation about this. I will work with anyone to fix this problem. I don't care who you are. I will work with anyone. I want all the kids in our our schools to feel safe. Something that we don't talk about is dating violence. It happens in our schools every day. I've mentioned before the girl who gets walked around by a leash by her boyfriend at school. How is that not stopped? We need to protect our kids. We need to set the example. We need to be the adults. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Delaney, Ms. Mersky.
Good evening, Madam Chair and Board. My name is Sarah Mersky. I'm a wife, mother of two children, member of our public schools, tax chair, voter, constituent, college student, and I live in District Two for School Board. Wow, what a difference an election makes. I want to touch on a little bit of the materials, the inappropriate materials in the libraries that I mentioned before. When those on the dais say kids have personal electronics where they can access this material anyway, I would say you are out of touch with what the majority of parents in your district and voters want. The parent leadership team in Brevard overwhelmingly wants help with keeping their kids safe online. Let me know if you need a need a resource to help parents. The other issue I want to talk about was D eighteen. It was on the agenda, but apparently I couldn't discuss it in the agenda items, which is confusing to those of us who come and we prepare to speak and we time our speeches. So do respect the business of the board and our time and the board's time as well. Just wanted to share that part. Everyone sitting on the dais should be driving a bus. Most of you subbed last year in a classroom. It's time to drive a bus. I watched, you know, there's been reports about from all over this district about lots of really, again, it goes back to the safety issue of these children, children being dropped off where they shouldn't be dropped off, people not knowing where children are. And this is not the fault of the bus driver, okay? The bus drivers tried to come and speak at a school board meeting in February, and they only had one minute, and then they were cut off. And that is not fair, and that's on the leadership of you, Madam Chair. And I'll leave with this. This past week, so my son gets picked up before my daughter on the bus. It's at fifty minutes between times. On Tuesday morning, my son was still waiting at his bus stop, and my daughter was picked up before my son was. And he said to the bus driver, can you please take me to my school, too? And then my son missed a whole period, the first period of school, and then the school ends up calling me or the robocall and saying that my son was not at school or that he was tardy or he had missed more than one period. And then me as a mom, I was really I didn't know where my son was or why he wasn't in school that day. So, you know, there's just it's so important to listen to parents and to work with your constituents. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Mersky. I will share with the board just for your knowledge, since there was reference to a situation in a school in my area, that that particular parent has updated that information and did speak with leadership at the school and has spoken with the parent of the child that was referenced, and all seem to be on the same page. So you are aware that that information was was left out, what was shared. All right. Anyone else have anything for the good of the order this evening? Then let's go home. This meeting is adjourned.
All right. Susan.